And so, in accordance with the, I guess, Open Public Meetings Act, I'm calling this regular board meeting to order. Roll call.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mrs. Devine?
Here.
Mrs. Maya? Oh, she's here. I saw her earlier. Yeah, she's in the potty. Mrs. McColsky?
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Mrs. Sherman?
Here.
Mrs. Zee?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Dilkis?
Here.
Mr. Chu?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. We did have an executive session tonight, and so I would like to take a motion to, I guess, to adjourn, to come out of the executive session. So is there a motion to come out of the executive session?
Removed.
And a second? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Next section is Section Three Presentations. So there will be two presentations tonight, but I think what we'll do is we'll, we will actually move to open up into committee of the whole before the presentation. So it'll make it a little bit easier for board members to ask questions during the presentations. And so, for now, I think I'll take a motion to enter committee of the whole. And a second? And it's all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And so now that we're in committee of the whole, we will have our two presentations. The first one is the elementary principles. We'll present program highlights.
Good evening. My name is Mark Wiltsey. I'm the principal at Garfield Elementary. I'm going to kick things off for the elementary portion of the presentation. Our first three slides are sort of a high-level, on-top view of what we discuss during our district-level meetings, starting with the mission and vision statement, where we keep a focus on the inclusivity and the success of each of our students. The second slide is, talks about our school acceleration plans. I believe we are in year four now of our school acceleration plans, where this year we're focusing more on the data collection, collecting individualized data through various points, using that data to create individualized student success plans using the data that's available to us. That's been an interesting conversation for many of us, as we've always used data, but this is allowing us to really bring it down to the granular, granular level for each student. And our third slide, key performance indicators. So there are seven of them. Again, if you're viewing this from the top of all of our elementary schools, the 24-25 goals are a collection. At last check, we had 804 elementary students. The column all the way to the right is all of our data compiled. I know you can read through each data point, but I'll focus on three of them. Three up from the bottom. We are starting with DIBELS training, excuse me, starting with DIBELS. So we had our beginning-of-the-year assessments in DIBELS. Right now, we're all in the process of our middle-of-the-year assessments. We're going to use that data to help drive instruction once we finish that. And the goal for the end of the year, when we give our end-of-the-year assessment, is to have 75% of our students at that proficiency or on grade level with their phonics instruction. And the bottom two, when we're talking about NJSLA data for math and for ELA, when we had our school acceleration plans that I referenced a few minutes ago. So what we have learned by looking at that data, those data points, is we can take an individual student who might be right at the proficiency cut score, or just below it, and maybe it was only a question or two that'll slide them into the proficiency range. So now we have that data, and we can take something like in math, measurement and data, maybe that was a standard where they were struggling, we can focus the instruction and the support to help get them over the hump or keep them in that proficiency area. So these key performance indicators are going to drive everything that we do at the building level, but what you're seeing here is a collection of all of the data that's been compiled for all of the elementary schools. All right, the next slide. So one of my responsibilities is that I am in charge of elementary counseling, which makes up the elementary wellness, wellness team, which is Diane Duque and Kirsten Plath. They are our school social workers. And Katie Schuman, who is our gen ed and special ed behavior, BCBA. So as the elementary wellness team, we are in charge of a school-based mental health grant through Rutgers University. January kicked off year three of a five-year grant. So on the right, you can see some of the things that we've been focusing, using that money on. The, the purpose of the grant is the recruitment and the retention of a school social work intern program. We currently have six school social work interns through Rutgers. Only one is here all five days, but they rotate a schedule and they are in each building. But we are using the money to also purchase programs and also help build a stronger intern program. The picture that you see on the left is from Ms. Negri's classroom at Garfield. We are very proud and happy over the last week, we were able to deliver over $11,000 worth of books to the K-5 classrooms. The book that you see there in the front, The Smallest Girl in the Smallest Grade, that's part of the Character Strong program that I'm going to talk about in a minute. But the, in September, we have the Kindness Kickoff, and we use that book as part of the Read Aloud, which is part of the scope and sequence of Character Strong. So we now have purchased these books that are K through five. They're color-coded, they're in order. We, so many of the teachers here don't realize that we are also going to buy an additional $10,000 worth of books. So we will have every single book in the Character Strong curriculum, and we will be able to use those books to help supplement that program. Okay, you can go to the next one. So speaking specifically of Character Strong, this is a Tier One-based program that we've used, that school-based mental health money. It focuses on social and emotional learning. It's a, it's a multi-tiered approach, but it supports the whole child. Like I said in September, it's the Kindness Kickoff. We are just wrapping up Perseverance now. Each month, there is a character trait that goes along with the program. I'm also happy to report that we are going to be purchasing the Tier Two and Tier Three portions of Character Strong. And the Tier Two and Tier Three portions will go into our elementary wellness teams when they log into the Character Strong program. So they'll be able to use that information to better support teachers if they're facing any kind of issues or concerns that they have in their classroom with behavior, attendance, safety, all of the things that are included there on the side. So that's Character Strong. And then the next slide takes you through the scope and sequence of the program. Another thing that I'm also proud to announce is Diane Duque designed a T-shirt through the elementary wellness team. The motto for Character Strong is be kind, be strong, and be well. The T-shirt is going to have that motto on the back with an elementary logo on the front. Every elementary student is going to get one to keep promoting the program because it has been really helpful for all of our students so far. So that is my overview, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kulak.
I assume that round of applause is for Mark. He's not feeling well, so big ups for Mark for being here and doing that and starting us off. Thanks, Mark. I'm Brian Kulak. I'm the proud principal at Tatum Elementary School. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the KPI data that you're not going to see. I really believe in the KPI data. It's made me a better leader this year. I would argue that a lot of this is the reason for a lot of that. So we talk about student voice. On the left is our student-run newspaper, the Tatum Times, which was suggested by a group of really excited kids several years ago. And then last year really came to fruition with the help of Panther Printing, some dedicated parents, and some really dedicated students. So we are in year two of the Tatum Times. You can find examples of these kinds of student voice-led activities throughout the district. This is just from my building. And on the right, we see Mr. Pfeiffer, kind of in the foreground there. Again, listening to students, he started a sportsmanship club, which is for fourth and fifth grade boys and girls, every day at recess, all year, both through football and baseball. It is called the Sportsmanship Club, not the Sports Club, because the whole program is about learning how to work together. So Mr. P has kids who are not playing, keeping score, making sure the time is right, doing all the things that you need to do to be involved without actually being involved. This helps kids who don't really want to be a pass catcher or a baseball swinger, a baseball bat swinger, still feel like they're involved in the action. It's a wonderful program. I'm really proud of it. So again, these are all across the district. This is just Tatum. So thanks to our students for listening to us. Go ahead. This on the left, really important picture, just for me personally, but I think for the district as well. Go ahead, just go back one. It's okay. Thanks to Mr. Adams and Mr. Lamore, who have started a senior leadership academy several years ago. What they do is they come over to elementary schools, really by request and often, and just hang out with our kids. It may not seem like much, but when you're a fifth or fifth-grade kid, or even down into a kindergarten kid, and you see the big kids, it changes your whole day, and it shows you what you're going to be. So this is Cecilia Clark, and then Charlotte Krelow on the left, better known as Charlie to Tatum people, in fourth grade. They struck up this little friendship. I snapped this picture, thinking nothing of it, and they got to use it tonight with both their permission, just to show what the relationships in the district mean. So not only do our kids ask when the big kids are coming back, but when you see the big kids come over and run and sweat and play tag for an hour straight, K through five, and smile the whole time, it's just a great program. So again, we talk about almost wraparound supports. We want kids to see and feel good about themselves in their own space, but then also the space that they're going to be in, in a few years. And I've been talking about SEL before SEL was popular. I think it is the foundation on which all kids learn, and I'll say it one more time. You can't ask a kid to come in at 8:40 and start math if he hasn't eaten the day before, the night before, if he hasn't slept, if he's experiencing significant trauma. So that's what we think about first in Collingswood, and then we figure out how to teach that student. So every day, SEL is more than just a motto. It is what we believe in, particularly at Tatum. We do use the zones of regulation, so parents probably hear red, blue, yellow, or green all the time. Students can self-identify how they're feeling. And then, thanks to Inside Out and Inside Out Two, we're able to use the emojis for a little bit of an easier way for kids to identify how they're feeling. So all of those are in play, and each has some sort of intervention from the classroom level to the nurse, to the EWT, who I cannot say enough great things about, especially at the elementary level, to classroom teachers and then to me. One of the things we try to do as elementary principals is demystify the principal's office. It is not what we grew up experiencing. So we want kids to come to us for a variety of reasons, not just because they may have been sent to us. So SEL every day, again, more than just a motto, it's just how we are. And I think that's why our elementary program is as strong as it is. Speaking of that, Mrs. Floyd.
And that was also for Mark, just to clarify, right? That was another clap for Mark. So I'm Mrs. Floyd, the preschool principal in Collingswood, and following up about how the great SEL initiatives in Collingswood is impacting the kids and their lives, I want to talk a little bit about Al, our little new friend in preschool. And Al's Pals, our new curriculum that we received DOE approval for this year, as a Collingswood and Oakland preschool program to incorporate into our creative curriculum lessons throughout the day. So Al's Pals is specific for our learners three to six, so our youngest little learners. And it is aligned exactly with the objectives of development and learning that we use every day to assess your students and help your students grow. As you can see, the kids are enjoying Al and his friends. The teachers are learning the voices, the names, how to read lessons as they're learning the lessons for the first time, as they are changing their voices. It is a very tricky task, so if you would like to come and participate, please do. I'm sure they'll love it. And it just incorporates a lot of what we're already doing with, within creative curriculum, but kind of giving that extra little oomph. The kids are very excited to see Al when they have their weekly lessons. They have a few songs. They have allograms. So if you have a preschool student, you may see every so often little certificates that come home, not necessarily on a daily basis, but they have little celebrations with Al just to acknowledge their accomplishments. So it's a really great thing to do. And then, of course, what do we do in preschool? We celebrate our students every day across the board. So whether or not it is a student who is practicing reading their favorite story in front of their class, kids experimenting during the bread study by painting pieces of toast in a classroom, really getting into the learning a different way, or some of our big wows, which I know is like a board meeting favorite, approving of them. We had Flair Dance Studio come in to all the preschool locations across both districts, just to give that additional enhancement of this school day. So we really enjoy looking at what the kids are learning, looking at what the kids are interested in, and as a staff, really thinking about how we can do something a little extra special, add that, you know, that extra memory, extra learning, have the kids ask a few additional questions, and, you know, really enjoy the preschool day. So thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Matt Jen. I'm the principal at Zane North. As Mrs. Floyd mentioned, one of the things we wanted to definitely do tonight was highlight some of the different ways we celebrate our kids. As everybody knows, we have amazing kids. And so, in our different buildings, we like to find different ways to celebrate them and their awesome accomplishments that they give day in and day out at school. And so we wanted to show you some different examples of that tonight. So at Garfield, Garfield this December held a attendance contest. They spelled out the word attendance. And every child who attended school during the month got their name in a hat for a drawing. And they ended up having over 70 students not miss a day of school in December. And then 10 winners were chosen at random to receive a prize bag. It's at Garfield. Next, newbie. Newbie, they nominate, students nominate classmates for demonstrating newbie fire. So that's friendship, integrity, responsibility, and excellence. At assemblies, students are recognized schoolwide for their outstanding character. And classrooms with exemplary attendance are also recognized at their assemblies. And the class with the best record of attendance is announced and awarded the newbie fire helmet to proudly display outside their classroom door. Next, you'll see an example from Sharp School. Here are some students from Sharp being honored as proud students. These are monthly awards given to students who have been nominated by a staff member for making good choices. And the students are recognized in school as well as in the community. Next, we have some examples from Tatum. Tatum's Club Being Kind program remains a crowd-pleaser at the school. Each week, students and staff can nominate each other for the award simply by virtue of seeing someone do something kind. And another example there of recognition is students having the opportunity to earn a gaming lunch with Mr. Kulak. And at Zane North, these are our Zane North Star Awards. It's a program where we recognize students and staff who exemplify characteristics that we think are really important to helping our school thrive. So safety, teamwork, accepting and including others, and reaching for the stars by making an extra special effort on their classroom academics. And at the end of each week, we announce our Stars of the Week, and they're selected and recognized at school and also in our weekly newsletter that we send home to, to families. At this time, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Hinson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Camila Hinson, the principal at Sharp Elementary School. So along with celebrating our students, we also, as Sharp, have a variety of Title One services, as are mentioned here. As Mr. Jenna mentioned, the Proud Student Recognition is one of our favorites, because our students are able to be recognized for a variety of reasons by teachers and any staff member in the building. When they are recognized, I go into the morning meetings and make, you know, a big announcement for this student. Ms. Hoffman, who also is our attendance liaison, she goes in with me with the sign. We take a picture. They get to choose a prize. And if you ride around, you may have seen some of the, the posters in the lawns of some of the students. So they're very proud, and that's what's called the Proud Student Recognition Award. We also have our High Impact Tutoring happening now. This is happening through our Huntington Learning Center. They're coming into, or they come into the classroom, and they have small group instruction, and they are offering tutoring to many of our students, as well as our after-school tutoring is also taking place. They both take place on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays. I'll use the word intentional to describe how we choose and select our students. It is a targeted intervention, so we are very intentional in selecting the students that are receiving the tutoring during the school day and also after the school day. And also, we use the data collected both summatively and formatively during, throughout the school year, definitely using, of course, our beginning of the year and now our middle-of-the-year data, which over this next week will be taking place, will be having those assessments. Also, NJSLA data, their assessments that they're taking, their module assessments that they're taking throughout the school year and the weeks. So we put that together to take a look at that, and then determine which students will, or which students will benefit the most or greatly from the tutoring services. I don't do that alone. I have my team. Ms. Lisa Rimchuk, who I believe is here this evening, is, has been instrumental in getting our High Impact Tutoring up and running, and also our after-school tutoring. And thanks again to Dr. Principato for connecting us with Huntington. I'm very excited that it is the middle of the year, so the middle-of-the-year assessment, we'll take a look at that, especially with both tutoring sessions, because they don't go throughout the entire year. So we will stop, we will pause and take a look at the middle-of-the-year data to see, you know, how their students are performing, and allowing that to kind of, you know, drive what we do next. Our Summer Bridge Program is another opportunity that we had last year. In July, it took a month, so this was really to help eliminate the summer slide as much as possible. Fun. And I'll actually go back to the after-school tutoring. That's also fun for our kids. We actually have a video that Ms. Rimchuk, she showed to me that the kids were literally saying, wow, this is fun. They said it, you know, it was a group of kindergarten students, and I'm like, this is what we want to see. We want our students to enjoy learning. The joy of learning is very, very important, you know, for me. So that was great to see. Our Attendance Liaison is another service that we have through Title One. That is Ms. Hoffman. She's able to call, you know, various parents, kind of understand, you know, the reason for if they're having an attendance issue. And then we have our Google Doc that I'm able to follow up. Attendance Letters went out recently, so that has been very helpful for helping some of our parents who need that extra support. We also have attendance plans that we have going on, so we'll know, like, well, how can we help? You know, we don't, I don't want to just send a letter. I want to know, how can I help you to get your student here and also on time? We also have Ms. Valencia, who has been key in helping connect, or soon as she's our interpreter at Sharp, and she also connects with the parents and so forth. So again, team, that is so very important to me, because without the team, we would not see the progress of our students. And the team, teachers, staff members, psychologists, interns, maintenance, of course, my administrative assistant, but everyone in the building, we work so well as a team. And then that's how we're able to see the growth of the students and also see the joy. I have students who are coming to me and saying, oh, I got 100 on a test, you know, or at the same rate I had a teacher to come to tell me that, you know, a student did really well on an assessment. So I love seeing the joy. And again, with the team, you know, we plan to just continue to see the progress of our students. And I think I have one more slide, and then I'll be, I'll be finished. Our, Thomas Sharp Elementary School Student Council. This group here is a great group, full of ideas. We meet on a monthly basis. They have their binders. They have an agenda. The meeting when Mr. Chu, you did the, the roll call, okay, we do that also, so the kids can just kind of, you know, experience, you know, those things. But no place for hate, as another, another initiative that we have at Sharp. So the students here are also, you know, involved with that. They're involved with the Character Strong, morning announcements. This, we've been going over perseverance. But I love their enthusiasm, and what I want them to know is that, okay, they are all fifth graders, but your underclassmen are looking up to you. And so, we have six positions here. Four are voted on, and two are appointed. So that way, it can be very inclusive of all of our students, you know, in the building. So we have our, you know, the normal president, vice president, secretary treasurer, and then the two appointed offices, a fundraising officer and a historian. And historian, he did say, okay, well, what do I do? I said, we're going to document, you know, through pictures and so forth. So, but this is our student council, and it's just another way of elevating the student voice and celebrating our students. So thank you very much.
So thank you to the elementary principals. Are there any questions from board members before we move on to the next presentation? I was going to mention one thing, which is that, looking at that presentation, it seems like there's a lot of amazing things happening at each of the schools. And also, I wanted to shout out the principals for the, what seems like incremental but, but meaningful KPIs that y'all are putting into place and striving to achieve this year. I think that's that, you know, when you think about that improvement year after year after year, it's just looking up in terms of what we're able to provide to our students. So thank you very much for all of your work. So now the secondary principals and supervisors will present the secondary education update.
And I would like to echo the words of our board president. Shout out to our elementary leaders, pre-K leaders, and our elementary staff at the middle school. I have the good fortune of inheriting all of the good work that you folks do. And one of the tests I always give the kids as I'm walking down the hall, and I go, so what elementary did you come from? If they say Sharp, I'll go, oh, so you're, you know my good friend, Ms. Hinson. And they always smile, or they say, oh, what, oh, you had so-and-so in fifth grade. And again, the reactions from our kids are always great to see. So thank you, thank you, thank you, because I say, at the middle school, that enthusiasm that you engender continues. So good evening. It, it is my honor to have served as the principal at Collingswood Middle School since 2006. And over the course of that time, since middle school is that time of change, we've sort of walked the walk and talked the talk. Once upon a time, Collingswood Middle School was a seventh and eighth grade building. Then it became a sixth through eighth grade building. Then we welcomed our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from Oakland, and it went from a Collingswood-only middle school to a real, true community with our ascending district, Oakland joining us. And over these various changes, we've really have had the, the benefit of being able to navigate them and those evolutions very smoothly by always staying true to our core beliefs. So, Mr. Alavere, if you want to hit that next slide there, one more slide. So what are our core beliefs? What's our philosophy at the middle school? And it's pretty simple. It boils down to, it all happens in the middle. By a show of hands, do we have any middle school parents here? Former middle school parents, yes. Lots of middle school parents. So you know what this means, right? If you have a middle school or had a middle school, you know, it all happens in the middle. Lots of things are going on there. And at the middle school, we work directly and consciously to really strike a balance between growing our students academically, but also supporting them in their social, emotional growth and development. We want to give them opportunities to develop a growth mindset, to continue to exercise that resiliency that you've heard mentioned as they come through the elementaries, and of course, seeking to empower our students with empathy and really connecting with relationships and community building. Supporting them through academic progress across all of our academic levels, we want to infuse rigor and relevance into what we're doing with the learning activities. Little school kids are pretty savvy. They'll say, do I need, what, do I, what, why do I need to know this? That's the relevance piece, right? That's the relevance piece, right? And the expectations, they want to be held to high expectations. They want to thrive. They want to buy in. And part of that buying in is also the relationship piece, wanting to work as a part of that community. Again, infused across all of our disciplines, we're looking at high impact strategies that we use to reinforce that academic progress, things like deliberate practice and summarization, integrating prior knowledge and question and discussion techniques, all things that research has shown will strengthen that academic progress. Throughout lessons, across content areas, teachers are constantly taking the pulse of the class. They're using formative assessment and the feedback that they gather to inform their next steps. Where do I go with this? What am I getting back from the students? And that kind of give and take, which helps us. And then of course, as our students grow and mature, that opportunity to self-reflect, kind of further self empowerment for them, self-reflect, self-assess where they are in their own learning, sort of metacognitively, how engaged am I in this? And we've introduced them to a continuum of engagement, which we'll talk about and I'll show you a little example later, so they can reflect and see what that looks like and kind of, all along with this stressing that we need to grow you, we need to move you academically, but we're also going to provide you, we're going to balance that with the supports that we have to support you in your social, emotional growth. All of this, of course, working again with the target behaviors that we have as well as the key performance indicators, which we'll take a look at in a little bit there. Next slide, Mr. Oliveri. So tracking some academic progress, of course, important. As we move from recovery to rigor, we're continuing to track our academic progress and we're getting more sophisticated as we go with data analysis and kind of diagnosing and prescribing. To assist us in these efforts, as I say, we have some key performance indicators that we are monitoring. We're setting goals supported by instructional strategies to assist our students in increasing their skills and academic proficiency. And of course, one great challenge, not only in Collingswood, not only in New Jersey, but across the nation, of course, is math proficiency. And that is a CMS focus area as we move forward. I do want to emphasize that at CMS, we see growth over time with our students in the area of academics. And that being said, I just wanted to give a little context to, we see with our math proficiency, that nine point one there listed for New Jersey SLA grade eight math proficiency. Just want to point out, that doesn't include fifty-four eighth grade students who took the algebra NJSLA instead of the grade eight because they were in an algebra course. If we factor those students in who passed, we're looking at a forty percent proficiency rate. More precisely, forty point two six. When I look at the same cohort group in seventh grade, there was a thirty percent math proficiency. So we see that growth over time. But I have to say, all that being said, rest assured, we're continuing to work collectively and consciously to challenge our students and their academic growth and development in the area of math because all of us at CMS believe in a growth mindset and continuous improvement. And we are, as I say, communicating that to our students on a regular basis. Later on in the presentation, you can hear more specifics from Dr. Principato, our district STEM supervisor, on the efforts we're making in that area. So as we take a look at our middle school program I'm studying, our core areas are sixth, seventh and eighth graders. It looks similar as you look across there, what they're taking year long. We'll have English, we'll have writing workshop, we'll have math, science, social studies, health and PE. In sixth grade, where you see that STEM lab, STEM lab is more of an extension for our math program as we join our six communities together that feed the middle school, kind of a leveling out and a support to really extend some math and again, get our students in a better place in math instruction. The STEM lab in seventh and eighth grade becomes more targeted support for those students as they move through the middle school. So that's our sort of general program. And a sixth grader, because part of the middle school is about growing your passion, discovering your interest, if you want to take a look at that next slide, Dave. We have in sixth grade, there is sort of one encore spot or one elective spot. So our students in sixth grade will have the opportunity of taking a full year of band chorus or orchestra. And we've worked it out where we have splits and they can kind of really get to multiple areas within our performing arts. Or the students who are not in our performing arts are exposed to a cycle, marking period cycle class where they will see a visual art, they'll have an art class, a world language, Spanish. And then they have STEM, science, technology, engineering and mathematics or a career in tech ed course selection. And for our sixth graders, that's tech ed and that's I cubed six. And you'll see, if we go on our next slide to seventh grade, this I cubed comes up a couple of times. People, what is I cubed? So I cubed, very clever, right? It's imagination, intervention, intervention and invention, yeah. Imagination, intervention and invention. That's hard to say. Because as I say, it's project based, it's problem solving, and these courses also encapsulate some mathematics. In seventh grade, those students who aren't taking targeted support in, in math, in their STEM lab, will have two spaces in their schedule that they will fill. All seventh graders will experience a cycle class, more exploratory cycle to kind of, to expand their horizons a little bit, develop their passions. And for them, they'll have a marking period of music exploration, they'll have a marking period of Spanish, and then they will be exposed to either tech design, half of our students take tech design, and the other half of our seventh grade would take the I cubed seven. Again, those STEM and CTE-like courses, which are also kind of a springboard as they move into high school where they'll have opportunities to kind of go deeper into those areas. Along with that, so they have two spots, that's one of their slots. Their second slot is filled with either a full year course in the performing arts, so they continue with band chorus and music, or they have an option of taking semester electives. There are seven semester electives that are listed here. Those semester electives are courses that are available to students to take in either grade seven or eight. So if I take maker space as a seventh grader, I don't repeat and take it as an eighth grader. We want to sort of expand what their possibilities are as they go through. Many of those semester electives are also reflective of what students can pursue on a little deeper level on our high school level. So our middle school grade seven electives look like that. And if we go to our next slide, our eighth grade, you say, it's the same slide. Nope, there's one change there. We have a music technology semester class that goes into their cycle class. And again, that's a great feeder for our music tech program, Mr. English program at the high school. So that's what our courses look like. And I want to talk to you a little bit about the credibility matrix. If you take a look at our next slide. As I say, middle school, it's really important that we strike this balance between growing our kids and letting them know how much we care about them, support them, want this, to build these relationships and build their confidence. So very simply, we're looking to aim for that top up, right or up, upper right quadrant where that's what we call the sweet spot. We're trying to establish credibility with the kids. We want you to grow academically, but we're going to support you in every way we can, social, emotionally, to, to get you there, building trust with you, being responsive to your needs. But again, insisting if all we did was kind of care about the kids all the time, which doesn't sound so bad, but never grew them academically, we'd be great. That'd be great if I were your uncle or something like that, taking you to the circus and things, and it would be a great day. But I want you to grow as well. So we're trying, as I say, to push you along with your growth and development, but kind of like with training wheels when we taught our kids how to ride their bike, right? And then slowly moving them to greater levels of independence as we continue to support them. And underpinning, all we do here is this desire to really be developmentally responsive to their social, emotional needs while really equitably challenging them to make progress academically. And through that process, we really hope that we reach their hearts and their minds. The continuum of engagement, this is always a great thing. I throw this in at staff meetings, I throw this in at other types of meetings, where are you on a continuum of engagement? Once upon a time, participating in class was great, right? Participate and I'm doing well. That is engagement, but there are other levels of engagement we want to talk to the kids about. We want them to self-reflect on their, their input into their processes of learner and what their output is. So if I am participating, for example, that's fantastic, but can I take it to another level? Can I invest in my learning? How do I invest? Can I begin to ask questions? Can I begin to plan in that way? So we talk to the students and ask them to reflect back on how they are going to engage and where were they in that engagement and what kind of results did they get? And not surprisingly, when students are investing and driving their engagement and they look at their outcomes and academic progress, they start to see that connection. What they put into it, how they're showing up to learning is actually resulting in positives on the other side there. So a good lesson because as I say, many of us believe that participating, raising your hand is good, and we can talk to our students about getting deeper into engagement, it's always a good thing. And the next slide, and speaking of engagement, I know they say a picture is worth a thousand words, so in this case, I guess multiple pictures must be worth multiple thousands here. But I'd like to highlight our efforts at CMS in the area of making connections and building community because it's really, really important to us as a learning community. This year so far, students have learned about a variety of communities through our monthly heritage and community celebrations. We've highlighted, recognized and acknowledged our Latino community, LGBTQ plus, Native American disabled communities with these, with more celebrations to come. As part of December's Disability Pride Month, we celebrate Inclusive Schools Week at the middle school, took part in daily activities, discussions, culminating in our students, signing the Inclusive Schools pledge to demonstrate their support for all students and each other because we are a community. Throughout this year, our students have been provided with multiple opportunities to participate in service, learning and community building, which includes our CMS nine eleven day of service, our school-wide event to honor the victims of the nine eleven attack and render service to our community. In November, we held a CMS Veterans Day concert, to which we invited area veterans to enjoy patriotic songs performed by our talented CMS musicians and choral members. And yes, let's have, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Somebody's investing in their engagement there. Good, all right. And our staff is actively involved with our students in our Panther Pantry Program, which is a food bank that absolutely is grassroots. It's been established to assist the families in need throughout our school district and our sending districts. And I just want to give a shout out to CMS teacher, Arden Niesner, who spearheads this and all, I do not work for CBS Three News. They did a great news story on it. It's still archived on their website. And in the news story, they highlighted just that, the collaborative efforts between students and staff to support this Panther pantry and just as I say, support those in greatest needs in our community. And just a great way for middle school kids to kind of come out of themselves a little bit more and realize there's a, there's a bigger world out there and another kind of level of engagement there. And if we go to the next slide, lots of things we're doing across the board to positively engage and reinforce this ever so important sense of belonging at the middle school. This I like to call CMS by the numbers here. Just incredible. We have, we've seen high levels of participation in our sports programs. We see, as I say, just incredible numbers of students working hard each day to be engaged across the board. Those percentages for our fall sports are incredible. We have seventh and eighth graders who are eligible to participate in our marching band program. They're here after school evenings, weekends, working very, very, very hard at that. It's always amazing when we look at our musical performance. In December, very busy, our students, as they opened the CMS musical Freaky Friday, between cast and group, CMS, a middle school musical, eighty-two students. That's eighteen percent of our school. Just think about that, eighteen percent of the student body just in our musical alone. And again, the relationships and the community that builds around that is, is amazing. So our fine arts programs, our sports programs, all of those things are really paying dividends and connecting our kids and giving them a sense of belonging. In addition to co-curricular activities, we're doing some things this year with target behaviors, student recognition programs, our, some of our student recognition programs have been around for a long time, our Panther of the marking period programs. But we have a couple of new things here. One of our school psychology interns came to us with the idea of a caught being kind initiative. And we are, again, recognizing those students and the staff members who nominate them on a regular basis. But some interesting things with target behaviors, our first target behavior was being on time for every class. Every class, you saw all those classes that you have to take, could you do it beyond time? Eighty-four percent of our students did during that time that we, that six week period that we tracked, we're tracked and monitor, prize drawing, just reinforcing those expectations that we, we want and need. Probably the most amazing thing, if you look at, no cell phone violations. That's right, that's over ninety-eight percent of our students, no cell phone violations. Can they do it? Yes, they can. And again, we reward, we rewarded them with that. Not appearing on this slide is our current target behavior, which is no office referrals. And we've been tracking that since November twenty-fifth. We are going to wrap up our tracking this Friday. And I am very happy to report to date, ninety-one percent of our students met that challenge, which again, middle school kids do some funny things sometimes, but yes, ninety-one percent is an awesome, awesome number. So constantly communicating, constantly reinforcing those expectations, as I say, is a fantastic thing for our kids. So I submit that to you as we move forward. And as I wrap up my portion of the program, I have to say, we are very, very excited to share with our community that the Collingswood School District has been awarded a three-year grant from the New Jersey, from the New Jersey Inclusion Project for Collingswood Middle School. New Jersey Inclusion Project is a partnership between All In For Inclusive Education, formerly known as the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education, and the Department of Ed. They are supporting us in their goal of developing more inclusive schools where students with and without disabilities learn, contribute and belong. And this initiative resonates so well with CMS's core belief and the heart and soul of CMS. So Dave, you want to take us that last slide there? So we are currently in phase one, year one of this, and we have formed a multidisciplinary team comprised of administrators and staff members. We are working with a facilitator from All In For Inclusive Education. We're looking at current inclusive practices, policies and the structures to really solidify our future vision. our future vision. And subsequently, from that draft and action plan to achieve that vision. As part of this, we're getting technical support from All In. They are providing our staff with professional development training, resources and, as I say, helping us to continue to build our capacity to support inclusive classroom practices and student belonging. And it is all very, very exciting for us. So yes, we should round of applause for the work being done there because it is, it is a collective effort from our staff. So as I said at the outset, it truly all happens in the middle, and although some of our days at the middle school might be a little bit stressful, I am just so happy and pleased and fortunate to work with a group of professionals that absolutely love what they do, they love our students and all of us. And people sometimes look at me and go, you work in a middle school, right? We absolutely love what we do. And we feel so fortunate to be able to join students on their path at this part in their life and help them realize and achieve the best version of themselves academically and socially and emotionally. And I sincerely want to thank our Board of Education and our public for supporting us in this very important work. So thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Dave Oliveri.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin, you're always a great act to follow, thank you. Good evening, my name is David Oliveri, I'm the supervisor of K-12 ELA and Social Studies and Grade Six to Twelve World Language and Fine and Performing Arts. Joining me today is Dr. Principato, she is the STEM supervisor of K to Twelve and CTE.
Thank you. So again, my name's Karen Principato, I am the district STEM supervisor and I also supervise the gifted and talented programs within the district. I would like to begin by talking about our instructional support programs. First, with our teachers, we focus on our classroom observations and walkthroughs. We provide frequent actionable feedback as it relates to student learning. We also support our professional learning communities as they collaborate on how to improve instruction via visible learning strategies. They also analyze not only the MAPG growth, but the NJSLA data and the daily classroom data that they correlate to help for planning and reflection purposes. Thank you. Mr. Oliveri?
So in literacy right now, our K to Eight ELA departments are taking steps to move toward programmatic changes that reflect a more science of reading approach to literacy instruction. We have formed a K-E committee that meets regularly, and the committee is currently examining programs that we're seeking to implement this spring, possibly with a pilot, hoping for at least partial implementation in 2025, 26. In summer 2024, we undertook the task of updating our curricular standards to reflect the New Jersey Department of Education revisions that went into effect for this past September. Simultaneously, we wrote a curriculum for Literacy Acceleration Nine, a course designed to fill content and knowledge gaps for select incoming freshmen who have demonstrated that they're nearing proficiency levels for NJSLA. Additionally, our ELA PLCs are using data to guide our instruction in real time. Before I conclude, I would like to briefly highlight some of the outstanding work that our elective teachers are carrying on. Dr. McMullin mentioned the great success of Freaky Friday, and Ms. Intercasa will help carry some of that performing arts momentum on the road for us in April, when the CHS Chamber Choir sings at the famous Carnegie Hall in New York City. Meanwhile, Ms. Ludwig has been preparing students for their audition in the All South Jersey Band. In World Languages, classes recently conducted a collaboration to celebrate Three Kings Day, and in Fine Arts, our classes have done great work throughout the year. Ms. Slade's students are working on a self-identity project, and she is preparing for her in-school art open house at CMS that just happened this past week. The next item on the docket for the Art Department will be gearing up for projects connected to Black History Month. I will now turn the program back over to Dr. Principato.
Thank you. So this section, I would like to focus on mathematics at the secondary campus. The secondary campus is implementing an evidence-based curriculum called Into Math, which includes Into Math Six, Seven, Eight, Into Algebra One, Into Geometry and Into Algebra Two, included our professional development opportunities and coaching sessions for our teachers. We also introduced a two-year math course called Integrated Math. At the conclusion of these two years, students will have earned the equivalent of a full year of Algebra One and a full year of Geometry. We continue to offer accelerated math courses at the middle school. These courses include Accelerated Math Six, Accelerated Math Seven and Algebra One Honors. At the high school, we continue to offer honors, Advanced Placement and Dual Embezzlement courses such as Algebra One Honors, Algebra Two Honors, Geometry Honors, Pre-Calculus Honors, Advanced Placement Statistics, Advanced Placement Calculus A/B, Advanced Placement Calculus B/C and College Math Dual Credit. Next year, we will be adding a ninth-grade math support course for intentionally selected An additional support we have conducted at the high school through our Title One is High Impact Tutoring. We have partnered with Huntington Learning Center, they are providing high-intensity tutoring sessions during the school day in the classroom for intentionally selected Next slide, please, thank you. In our Science, Technology and Engineering Departments, the high school engineering program will be adding its third course called Aerospace Engineering. The engineering pathway also includes an after-school Technology Student Association called TSA. This group engages in STEM activities and state competitions. We've had the addition of the Math League contest for our high school students. Select classroom teachers work with their students to enter them into local and state math competitions. I would also like to add that we offer a number of honors classes in Biology, Chemistry, Physics, Anatomy and Physiology, Environmental Science, Computer Science, Engineering, Digital Production and Construction Technology. We offer AP classes in Biology, Chemistry, Physics, Environmental Science, Psychology and Computer Science. We offer dual-credit courses in Anatomy, Biology, Chemistry, TV Production, Statistics, College Math, Digital Production and Psychology. Thank you, and now I would like to introduce Mr. Newman, the high school principal.
Good evening, everyone. So yesterday, when I was watching the game, I couldn't take it. I was in and out of the room, in and out of the room, but in the end, you know, the Eagles did what they needed to do and they pulled it off. But you know, Jalen doesn't do this without his team. Get it? You get where I'm going? I can't do this without the supporting cast that's around us as far as a high school is concerned. Every time we huddle up, you know, we are actually going over information that's crucial, that's critical to the way we function and how we move forward. So I do appreciate the team that surrounds me on a regular basis and, you know, just helping us to be able to, you know, to be able to move forward. See Would You Know, last year when we came on board, when I came on board, one of the things that we discussed was, what are the things that students need to have an enjoyable experience as far as a high school is concerned? Well, we know that being kind, caring and supportive matters to students. Students said that this is what's important to them. And so it's a call or response is what it is. When I say See Would, you know, folks say you know, or kids say you know. Kind of backed away, you know, from doing it as often as I did it last year, but it still matters, you know, and it is something that, you know, the meaning behind it is to keep the focus on, you know, when we're in the hallways, how do we treat each other? When we're in classrooms, you know, how are we supportive of one another? When we are thinking about Collinswood twenty years from now, you know, what do you remember? Do you remember the classes or do you remember how, you know, the culture that was there, the kind culture that was there? So See Would You Know, what is it, what's behind the meaning? Are folks being kind, caring, supportive? Is it fun? You know, are the classrooms engaging? And also trying to help folks understand that this is your school, you know, claiming what's yours. When you claim it, when you own it, it becomes important to you. And so we want that student voice to be, you know, lifted up, and we want students to, you know, enjoy being here and be able to make that statement. You know what, Collinswood was a pretty cool place, this was my school. As far as our academic progress is concerned, you know, we are going hard this year as far as the, you know, the rigor and relevance, you know, we want students to understand that it's supposed to be challenging, but we also want to make those connections to make the, you know, the work more enjoyable or more understanding, but they need to be able to understand why it is that they're learning, what they're learning. You know, so through high-impact visible learning strategies, this is not new to our district, this is something that we've been grappling with for a while now. But this year, our focus is on deliberate practice, summarizations, integration and questioning, discussion and techniques. So what that pretty much means is, we're trying to make sure that students have different ways of going deeper into the content, making sure that when they're done, you know, dealing with the hard concepts and collaborating and working with one another, that on the other end of that, they understand, they fully understand what it is that they've been working on as far as that subject area is concerned. The formative assessments allow us to do benchmark, allows teachers to do benchmark assessments just throughout the course of the year and then take a look at, okay, well, I know we taught this, but if this isn't working, what do we need to do a little differently? And that feedback is helpful for being able to make those adjustments. Our Renaissance program here at the high school, since I've been here, it's always been one of those things that students are always looking to see every quarter, you know, did they make that Renaissance program? And the Renaissance program is to celebrate students. We do believe in celebrating our kids. And one of the ways that we do that is to remind them through, you know, the work that you do in the classroom, through, you know, attendance, being on time, not just being here, but being here on time, that positive behavior, those are the things that we want to, you know, lift up and honor those students that are actually being able to do that. So the Renaissance program is helpful. We have other things that, you know, we started this year, Ms. Tatum, this was her great idea as far as a pop-up shot, and it kind of does the same thing. This pop-up shop, she has a lot of little, you know, I don't know, food and prizes or whatever that's in this little mobile cart. And she'll pop up and say, okay, you know, kids will come down with tickets that they get from teachers for those basic, you know, things that they're doing, you know, behavior, you know, the way teachers want to honor a student for just being a great kid, you know, they'll pop up, she'll pop up and they'll come down with that ticket and they're able to get something out of there. So it's one of those kind of fun things that we're doing this year, but that is happening this year. Tracking academic progress. Once again, using our KPI or our key performance indicators, when we do huddle up, you know, as administrators, we're able to look at the information that's important to help make Collinswood better overall, you know, and so as far as our attendance, absenteeism rates, you know, those are the things that, you know, we spend time as far as our, was it MTSS and the different groups that come together, our committees that come together to discuss those things. We want to be better at all of our, you know, categories here. Some areas, we want to, you know, we want to meet that goal and, you know, and raise the percentage level, and other areas, you know, we have to reduce, our suspension rate is coming down, you know, based on the approach that we took this year, our suspension rate, you know, I think we're on target. Based on the fact that we just have less students doing some of the silly things that were, you know, being charged with suspensions and all of that, but we're just having, you know, students meet that, meet that demand of bringing down that particular percentage. And then with regards to our proficiency levels, those are areas, again, that we come back to on a regular basis, you know, through the MAP testing, is there growth? Are we making growth in those areas? Are we making strides toward those particular areas that we know to be important for our Our Guidance Department, they get busy, they roll up their sleeves and they get busy as far as our students, you know, are concerned. When they come on board in ninth grade, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of conversation back and forth with regards to what they want to do as they're moving on, but we challenge our students to, you know, to take that next step with regards to where they want to go. That twelfth grade, by the time they graduate, those students are ready to, you know, to move on. Counselors on a regular basis, you know, are asking or working with students with, you know, with regards to what they choose to, where they want to go, I'm sorry, as to where they want to go. We have students in their twelfth grade year know that they're going to be able to do Ivy League. We know students that are looking to get into the military. We know that there are students who are looking to do their, you know, if that's their choice, community and work at the same time or what have you, but by the time they actually graduate, our Collinswood students are ready to move forward. But counselors are taking the time to make sure that the planning is happening from that ninth through twelfth grade year, and then making sure that the community is well aware of what needs to be done to make sure that students are ready. So through the PSAT day that they do, the college visits and the tours that they're doing with that, the financial nights, making sure that, you know, families have the information that's needed, our Guidance Department is doing a wonderful job in that area. Our high school program of studies, our Guidance Department has been taking time recently with our supervisors just to make sure that, you know, all the classes are, you know, for next year are there. When those students come in in ninth grade, they get a chance to take a look at, you know, everything that they're going to be doing right, you know, through twelfth grade year. The challenge is to, you know, push students to challenge themselves, you know, take a look at the honors level classes, take a look at those AP classes, you know, that are going to be afforded to you and, you know, step up. Not every student needs to do that, but you do have your students that are always looking to push themselves, and so, you know, that gives them, you know, that gives you a broad picture of what it is that students are taking on a regular basis as far as core subjects are concerned. But the advanced work, the advanced coursework is something that, you know, we definitely, I want to say that we are just as prepared and challenging as far as our students are concerned. It's, the offerings are there for them, right? I would put this up against any district as far as what it is that we offer with AP and course offers and dual-credit opportunities. My daughter, when she was here in 2020, decided to do more, and I was happy to see this, do more of the dual-credit classes. That was great because when she graduated, you know, that was less money coming out of my pocket in the end, as far as college was concerned. This kid was, she goes into college as a second semester freshman, which was pretty cool, you know, and students are doing this on a regular basis, and we have students that do challenge themselves, that do push it, push the envelope, but they are going to work, you know, these AP courses, it's not something that you can just, you know, willy-nilly go in and take your time. No, you're going to go in and you're going to work, but you're going to come out on the other end better for it. But our school does have that, and that's a wonderful opportunity for our kids. Our high school electives, I get excited about because of the opportunity for students to be able to learn some things about themselves that are learning interests or have an interest. Maybe it's something that they hadn't thought about before, they go into a class and through, you know, dealing with the, you know, the content, understand that, you know what, this may be something that I want to do when I move on. I love this example, I was talking to Mr. Ingram, he has audio production, I was talking to Mr. Ingram last year, and he said, you know, I have kids that come in, get just a sample of what it is that they're doing. Audio production, they're making beats, they're making music in class, right, digital music. So they come in and this particular, you know, these particular kids said, you know what, I want to practice this at home. So what do they do? They get their pennies together, they get, you know, they communicate with their parents, they get the items that they need in order to be able to practice at home, the same thing that they were using in class, and that's what they did, they practiced at home. Lo and behold, it turns out that these kids, you know, get so good at it, they can actually sell their music, and they were selling their music. They were making money while they were in high school, you know, and what did it, you know, how does that happen? It happens because they're exposed to it in school. My senior leadership program, I am so proud of that program, you know, when I first came on board, you know, it was what it was, but, you know, the fact that it has evolved to what it is, you know, it's wonderful. They are ambassadors for the district, not just the high school, but for the district. They get out there, they get They get out there, they get to the, um, elementary schools. The passion projects that they are very interested in, in doing, the passion projects are awesome, you know? It's, it's a game changer, and when they get out there, as far as the passion project, what it is, is, uh, senior leaders, um, what way can they make a difference as far as their community or their, their school community? And they come up with an idea and say, okay, this is what I want to do for my community, for my school community. And there's a wide array of different ideas that they, that they, you know, are passionate about. But the senior leadership program is an awesome program, and they're wonderful, uh, leaders inside the building. Another program that I'm extremely, you know, uh, proud of is, um, uh, Ms., um, Armando's, uh, TV and production class, you know, they get busy, they get busy. Um, I've been there, and they are award-winning, and they are award-winning. I've been, I've, I've been there, I've been, you know, last year when I went in for, um, announcements, you know, these kids are working, you know, they're just, they're, they're just busy, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking around, I'm like, this is either intimidating or exciting, just watching what it is that they do. But I got in front of the camera, and the kid is pointing to me and saying, you know, this camera here, you know, I'm just like, wow, I felt like this was, this is professional. But the bottom line is, when these kids go on, you know, this is what I've been, this is what I'm hearing, when they go on, they go on with, I would just imagine the experience that they have, they walk onto a campus somewhere, or they walk into a, um, I don't know, some type of program somewhere, and this is not new to them, you know, they come in with experience. They're not coming in, um, for an introduction into the program, they're coming in to enhance the program, or, you know, or help it be better. But, you know, we have this, again, award-winning program, every year, she tells, she tells us about the awards that the students won based on their products, you know, I mean, you know, that they put out. I think it's awesome, um, but, you know, this program, they do daily announcements, um, you know, cover news and things like that, but it's a wonderful job, and, um, you know, it's exciting to have this in the program. Once again, um, when I talk to other administrators in other districts, I know what it is that we have, and when I'm talking about the different things that we have, you know, the comment is, wow, well, who is in charge of that, and who's doing, yeah, we have that here in Collinswood, we have just different things that other folks want. And I think, I'm, I'm definitely proud, you know, to be, uh, able to talk about these things to other administrators when I'm, you know, when we're having these conversations and meetings. Um, setting high expectations, bottom line is this, you know, I've said this before, um, to, uh, you know, to, to every class, the way you present yourself in the building matters. People have talked about how the culture, you know, is nice and calm, and we like that, and I get that, and I understand that. But the bottom line is, kids are doing the basic expectations with regards to who they are, they know they can, you know, the way they present each other, you know, uh, to each other in the hallways. Um, are we, are we, are we able to engage with each other on a level that is comfortable? When you walk away and you're comfortable with that engagement, the answer is yes. That's what Collinswood's about, these, you know, our students are doing this, and they're very capable of doing this. Presentation matters, presentation always matters. It's one of those things that adults, you know, we've heard this, we've been growing up, you know, watch how you speak in public, watch how you talk to people, watch how you engage with people. That's what we're doing here at the, you know, in the high school, watch what you say. What you say matters, you know? You can harm someone, or you can help someone. So what's it going to be, you know? And our kids choose on a regular basis, I, I believe our kids choose, and we're seeing it, you know, to just be, be that kind spirit to one another. Um, attendance matters, you can't learn if you're not here, you know, and here on time. So those are the things that, you know, we're constantly reminding, we're putting it out there, be here so you can learn, just being in that room and picking up the information that you're getting from the teachers matters. Of course, if you study, you take it to the next level, but just being here matters, and so be here. Uh, positivity is the thing, I mean, you know, when you have that positive behavior, it is very easy to do, um, and so, just keep it positive. Um, I have this one student on a regular basis, I know, I know that when I'm done talking to him, I am exhausted, I'm exhausted because it's, you know, he's got that, well, you know, the bottom line is, I'm exhausted, but he feels better, you know? So, I want him to understand, and say, hey buddy, you know, you can be positive on a regular basis, and so, you know, we're, I'm working on it, you know, we're going to get him. Um, set goals and challenge yourself, you know, have that North Star, what are you working towards, you know? Are you just wandering aimlessly, or do you know what it is that you're going after? Some students, it's, it's very easy for them, you know, they know that by the time I graduate, I'm going Ivy League with some money, you know, with some scholarship money. Others, by the end of the week, I just want to be able to not get in trouble, you know? And so, it, it depends, and it's okay, every kid is different, but you know what, success breeds success, and it'll come. Um, and we want our students to challenge themselves, we want them to, you know, take a look at AP and honors level classes, we want students to challenge themselves, if, if you're not that type of person to be socially, you know, uh, you know, to, to engage socially with other people, maybe you want to try that, maybe you want to try, you know, developing those areas that you know that you need to, um, you know, uh, be better at. Uh, get involved, when it all comes down to it, you know, there's a lot of activities, um, that students can learn some more things about themselves, you know, so when you get involved, that's what you're doing, you're, you're being, you're, you're connecting with other people, you're learning how to talk to people, you are working on that social engagement. Um, you know, I feel, I feel bad for students that, and, and it's, and it's okay, but sort of, some students, you know, come to school and then they just leave by the end of the day, I get it, you know, and some of them are just working, some, you know, but others, you know, those students that aren't doing much of anything afterwards, I would love to see them be more involved. Now, if they have other things off-campus and all that, I get that, that's wonderful, that's great. As long as you're doing something to, to, you know, figure out, that there's another part of me that needs to be developed, that engagement is important. My own son at home, I keep, he's driving me nuts, he's a sophomore, and I'm like, dude, you need to be more, he doesn't like sports, that's fine, well, what do you like? You want to play the piano, what do you want to do? And so, we're constantly coming back to that, like, buddy, you got to be able to do something to figure out what else about you, you know, that you enjoy, what else about you you can be good at, what else about you that you enjoy. So, uh, I, I definitely put that out there, get involved, be around, get involved. Um, Mr. Jefferson is going to come up and talk about, uh, this next piece as far as, um, overall behavior.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone, my name is Mike Jefferson, I'm the District Director of Culture and Climate. And so, I have two, uh, new program initiatives, uh, to introduce to you this evening, and two updates on student program initiatives that started prior, earlier in the year, back in August, actually, both of them. The first one is Student Conduct and Behavioral Expectations, our updated, um, Code of Conduct Policy Restorative Code of Conduct Guide. Most of this is going to fall under the umbrella of our Restorative Code of Conduct Guide, in which we are really excited about the continued progress, uh, in our restorative practices process. Restorative Code and Guide, in which we are asking staff members and students to take a look at restorative opportunities to offer continued support as staff members and students respond to conflict and challenging behavior. I think it's important to remember that the restorative practices approach is not just for staff members, but also students. We actually have had multiple, uh, situations this year in which students have walked into my office or the assistant principal's office, and as we've even introduced this concept to them, they are coming in asking for adults to assist them in having a sit-down and having a conversation with other students. So that has been very, uh, positive and beneficial. Next slide, Doc? Next slide, Dr. McMonahan, thank you, sir. Um, so one of the new initiatives is, um, uh, in our School Culture and Climate, is a program that's called A Better You. A Better You is a strategic approach to student success, a social and emotional learning program that also educates students on the dangers of THC-laced edibles. If you've ever looked at some of the research, we're, we're being proactive here with a lot of teenagers looking at edibles and not wanting to put them in the same categories as, uh, some of the other, um, substances, uh, illegal substances. And, um, so this starts off with an engaging assembly, um, from a guy by the name of Sam Jones, um, and it is programmed that, it's a program that's really aimed at changing the culture within the school. It, it is, it is awareness, it is improved decision-making, it is strengthening self-regulation, and this comes with weekly sessions in which you will meet with students. Uh, one of the things, I had, um, our, our Director of SAC, uh, Mr. Kevin Adams, sitting on this, um, meeting with Sam Jones in a Better You, so it's interactive components, activities, it's posters, it's t-shirts, it's hoodies, it's, you know, it's, it's students walking around with, with these t-shirts and hoodies that they're, they're going to be awarded, um, it's, it's, it's gamification, so it's a whole program aimed at really changing the culture and social emotional learning. Next slide, Doc? And so, that's just, um, some of the things that comes along with it, um, and we are also including eighth graders, we, we, we didn't think that some of the content appropriate, going lower than eighth grade, so it is eighth through twelfth, thank you, Doc. School Culture and Climate, the Resilience Center, I met an individual by the name of Joseph Torre, I was at a professional development, uh, program at Temple, and I sat down next to this individual, and he and I started talking, and as soon as he told me what it was that he, that he did, I really got excited. The Resilience, uh, Center is a, a program out of PA aimed at building resilient skills in the LGBTQ student community by creating a safe space through a curriculum designed to build community, connection, and the skills and courage to navigate through a challenging world and society. So they will be meeting, it's a, um, six-week program, and they will be meeting on Monday evenings, and I'm really excited to see what the resources this is, and, and, and giving students, I always kind of say that, that armor that they need to, to navigate through society that we have all seen recently can be rather cruel when it chooses to be. Next slide? Okay, and next we have our Elevating Our Student Voice Initiative, um, in which recently the, the student voice has communicated to Dr. McDowell and myself that they, they're looking for and in need of a surveying platform, one of the things that they really want to focus on as they have already begun to, to set their thesis behind their goals, is really look out, look at a way or platform, and how can they interact and engage with staff members and students, and kind of get a, um, a gauge on what people are thinking and feeling, so that they can really begin to, um, put together some larger presentations and discussion questions aimed at sparking necessary conversations needed to implement change and awareness. Recently, the group has, we have set up a monthly schedule now in which they do meet with Dr. McDowell at least once a month, moving forward from now throughout the rest of the year. Thank you. Next up, Dan Wellen, Assistant Principal.
Thanks, Mr. Jefferson. Um, my name's Dan Wellen, I'm the Assistant Principal at the high school for ninth and 10th grade. Uh, I know you've been watching our presentation for quite a while, since I have the mic, I do want to thank my administrative team I've worked with for quite a long time, love working with you guys and, and, uh, doing this good work. Um, I, I, my remarks are brief, uh, but would continue from what Mr. Newman was speaking about in terms of student involvement, that, uh, of course, we're a high school, we're an academic institution, but, uh, it's shown that students are going to succeed and feel more a part of their school when they get involved beyond the classroom. So, uh, one of our groups that is kind of threaded throughout a lot of the climate and culture of our building is our High School Student Council and Student Government, and that takes part, um, through grade-level, um, advisors and grade-level elected students, as well as an executive board that meets during the flex period during our new schedule, um, and is part of, uh, the overarching state group, the NJASC, the New Jersey Association of Student Councils. So, um, that group actually meets in the fall, winter, and spring, um, they get to learn from a lot of other student councils around the state, and then every other year, um, South Jersey, um, has elected students to the State Student Council, and so, we're loo, we're looking out for a sophomore, junior, um, to run for that State Student Council next year at some time. Um, there's also a lot of our, um, traditional events like homecoming, this is a picture from our homecoming pep rally and our homecoming court. Uh, we, around the holiday time, uh, make peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for the Cathedral Kitchen, along with some of our, our other student groups. Um, there's, my personal favorite, uh, event of the year is the staff breakfast, we meet right here in the cafeteria, very early, right before, um, that winter break, and the students actually serve breakfast to the staff. We usually actually have more students here to serve us, it was almost a one-to-one ratio of personal services here, it was very nice, um, but it's a great event, uh, along with our choir coming out to, to sing some festive music for us, um, and a really nice time, um, at a, at that time of year. That leads up into the reindeer games, which is also a favorite event of all, uh, I saw our seniors practicing this year in the gym as I was coming in, um, it was a very, very nice effort, but the staff prevailed again, um, to, to take home the trophy. Um, and as we get into the spring, uh, we're, we're prepping for our blood drive, which is also, we are, um, one of the only schools in New Jersey that hosts two blood drives through our student council and our interact club, and then a scholarship goes to a student at the end of the year because we host two of them. So we're prepping for that right now, we have our senior citizen prom down at the, uh, Community Center in, uh, April, May, and then our last dance for the seniors, which is a really nice event, if senior parents are out there, um, keep an eye out for that, it's a really nice event that, that the students get to pick someone special in their lives, come out one last time. And then our, our extracurricular events, this is really just a sampling, this is a picture from the fall, uh, when high schools, when school starts in session, um, we have a, uh, activities fair right outside here during the, the, uh, lunch periods, students get to go around to tables, see representatives from all of the different clubs and sports, and try to sign up and find that thing. Um, that, that extra thing that, that's, uh, you know, going to be something that they look forward to beyond the classroom, and there's tons of different opportunities. Um, we have a couple of things coming up between our, our Model UN Club and our Mock Trial Club, are prepping right now for, um, some competitions and, and a conference that they're going to. Um, our Bike Maintenance Club started last year, I believe it was five or six, Joe Bresch, if you're out there, um, you can correct me, um, that they've repaired and, and handed off a bike to someone in need, um, really cool opportunity to, to learn a skill, but also give back to someone. And, um, we're, we're trying to play with our new schedule as well, for those students that are involved, um, and, and do have jobs that, that prohibit them from staying after school, we have that flex period, we have that time at, uh, the beginning of the day, where we're trying to work in some of those active, activities for the students as well. So that's my piece, and, and this feeds right into our great athletics program, so I'll introduce, uh, my colleague, Ms. Hart, our Athletic Director.
Um, first, I'm actually going to touch on some updates for our curriculum for next year, and we are actually changing our, um, physical education program to offer some, uh, variety for the, um, upper levels, so the ten through twelfth graders. So ninth graders will have a traditional PE where they get to see all the different types of activities that we can do, and then, um, throughout the year, and then in grades ten through twelve, they will get to actually pick their specific activities that they feel more inclined to, which is hoping to engage them a little bit more because they have a choice. So if they want to pick group fitness and wellness, because that's more of their speed, where they can do things like zumba or just dance, um, and different low-impact aerobics and things, or they can go and pick strength and conditioning, because they like to work out and they want to work out in the off-season, or if they're an athlete, or they just want to be able to go to the gym and know how to use the equipment, so they can pick strength and conditioning. Um, if they like team sports, because they'd rather be part of the team and, and do something, but they don't really feel confident enough to join a team at the school, at the high school level, so they can go and pick team sports. And so, um, we've changed a couple of things to let them have more choice in what they are picking for phys ed. Um, as a senior and a junior, um, we are incorporating, um, instead of having adaptive PE, we are doing the Special Olympics Unified PE, and in that case, they will also be able to be unified partners. So eleventh and twelfth grade will have the opportunity to become unified partners and choose Unified PE to, um, engage with, um, any of the students who have a disability and are in that class, and, and they can be, become, um, you know, partners with that class. Um, and then also, the final elective is just for seniors only, and that is the Lifetime Sports and Activities, which, um, has a variety of different things, some backyard games, and they've worked through, so they get a little bit more fun, and, and they get to do things a little more low-key that are just going to be able to, um, engage them in, in, in their life in the future. So that's a great change. Next, athletics, so we've had some great things happening with, um, our teams, um, and to highlight each of them, I will forget one, and then that team gets mad when I forget one, always happens. So I'm leaving it as we have done some great things with some teams, we've gotten to sectionals, it always happens, so I've, I've cut that one. Sportsmanship Award, we, um, we've been awarded, um, from officials, some sportsmanship awards, um, and won some team awards for that. Um, we are going to have, we had this last year, it was an all-signing day, so any student who is going to college- So any student who is going to college and wants to continue their career playing their sport, they can come with their family, they set the table up, they get to bring their school, their decorations, whatever they want. They put them on the table, we have our Collingswood backdrop, and they get to do fun social media pictures that, hey, I'm committing to, wherever they're going to go next year. So we did it last year, we had a great turnout, students who wanted to do it. It's open to any senior who wants to do it, no matter if you're going to Princeton or you're going to go to Camden County. Doesn't matter, any choice, come on and sign up. So if you have a senior and they did a sport and they're going to continue playing that sport, come on down, sign up. It'll go out to the seniors, actually shortly, because February is next week. So they will get a sheet, probably the second week in February, to sign up. Because that will be the second week in March, right before spring sports start. So, spring sports, on that note, also is coming up. So we are having a last spring physical exam day. So if your child needs a physical from our school doctor, no problem. We can get that done. The doctor's coming in on February 20th. So all we need is the parent to come into the building to sign up. We check your ID to make sure you're obviously the parent, sign off on the waiver, and then you can sign your child up for a physical. So it makes it very easy. If your child's physical is coming up on expiring, we can do that. If you can't get into your doctor, no problem. The games are all scheduled online. And as well as girls' and boys' basketball are actually all livestreamed on Huddle TV. So if you feel like watching a girls' or boys' basketball game, you can go to Huddle TV, look up for Collingswood High School, and you can watch the game. These are all the sports we have for each winter season, each fall, winter, and spring sports. So they are all the sports we have, we have tons of them. And everything is set up. There's only been, I think, a little bit of a change, but as far as middle school and high school. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments from board members? I just have one really quick question. And really great presentations from everyone, I greatly appreciate it. But Mr. Newman, there was just, I had just had one question on the 2024-2025 goals for the NJLSA Algebra I you had as non-available. All the other goals were set up. I didn't know if there was a reason why the Algebra I goals were marked as NA for the future.
We have a new program, the Integrated Math Program, and that would offset the overall percentage, you know, for that particular goal. So we're changing our program and in being able to do that, you know, the understanding is that the percentage... Help me out, Karen.
So we have Integrated Math, which means that we have a large group of students who will not be taking Algebra I until they finish the second year of Integrated Math. So that that leaves us a gap. So then whatever students that we have, it wouldn't be comparable to what we're doing now. Right, okay, thank you.
A quick comment, and thank you again for all the presentations and all the time that went in to prepare. I had the opportunity to go to Oakland's board meeting last week, and to a former board member and current board member took a tour of the high school and had a lot of really positive things to say about that tour experience. And I think that this helped to highlight some of the really positive things that are happening on our secondary campus and across Collingswood. She also made that offer out to people to come and take tours. So I think the more that people can be exposed to the great things that are happening with our kids and our programs, the better.
And I'd also like to thank the secondary administrators and the content area supervisors for the amazing presentation about all the different options. And I will say, as a former seventh-grade math teacher, I do agree with Dr. McCall that it does all happen in the middle, so. All right, so for the rest of committee of the whole, there are a few more topics that I'd like to touch on. First is to welcome our four new board members. I think this is an interesting year in that we actually have four new board members on the board, so I want to welcome the four new board members. And hand-in-hand with that is that we will be having our board retreat this coming weekend, which is basically an annual board retreat, which is a long-working meeting of the board. And this is a time for us to have the chance to review the data, the budget, discuss priorities, looking at a lot of what was, what was talked about actually in these presentations, you know. I'm really excited for the opportunity to look at some of the data from some of the more recent initiatives, like the DIBL screening or the MAPS testing that was mentioned inside the presentations. I think these are, it's an amazing opportunity for us as a board to get together, see the progress that the district is making, and also to discuss how we can help support the district as a board, specifically in terms of strengthening the academics and addressing the academic disparities throughout the district. One of the things that I've had the opportunity of talking to many parents and what I've heard a lot is that there's so many parents and families love the community that has been so clearly expressed in these presentations of these schools. And also that how important academics and academic rigor is to them and their students. And to me, I think that that rings very true because in the end, right, one of the focus points for our schools is that our schools are for learning. And that leads to my next point, which is that recently, as has been reported heavily in the news, there have been some executive orders and a focus at the federal level by the current federal administration on immigration enforcement activities. You know, and this is past week, this topic of how these executive orders might impact our schools came up in discussions within our committee meetings. And one of the things that I want to say, just overarching, is that the theme that stood out is, again, that our schools are for learning. And so, you know, knowing that this topic is really important to our community and frankly, to some of our students and our families, I asked Dr. McDowell if he could speak a little bit more about how the district and the schools will be approaching this issue.
So good evening, everybody. Thank you, thank you for attending. And so just to further reiterate what Roger said, is that our schools, they are places of learning for all children, end stop. No excuse, no apologies needed. We met, we've been meeting as district executives, regional leaders throughout the state, we've been meeting for several weeks. We've been meeting with attorneys, we've been meeting with advocacy groups, trying to get a deeper understanding in terms of not the political context, but the legal ramifications and what we can or cannot do, how we are or not empowered. And so let me be very clear. In the state of New Jersey, it is against the law to ask, inquire, or infer the status of a young person in our school district. We don't ask, we don't care, we love all of our children. And so moving forward, it was also important to make sure that our school leaders and our staff don't carry the weight of not knowing. And so one of the things that was really important was for us to sit down with members of the board to make sure that the board understood that we were all looking at this and we were looking at this strategically, that we had already engaged legal representation and all of the advocacy groups, both at the state, the county, and the national level. And we wanted to make sure that we were sitting down with our school and district leaders in order to make sure that they were clear in terms of the protocol. And so the protocol is very simple. In the event that a federal agency of any kind attempts to enter into one of our schools, requests information or the like, they are to immediately reach out to my office and we will take it from there. We do not expect our schools to have to deal with this. And we will be working in partnership with our attorneys and our legislative advocacy groups in order to figure out what it means for both Collingswood as well as Oakland. And so we sent out just a high-level message to staff as well as all of our families in both communities. This is an ongoing discussion and it's fast-moving, and we don't have all of the answers in terms of what it will or will not look like. But what we are committing to is making sure that our community is kept in the loop. And more specifically, how can, how they can actually support all of the members of our community.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. I appreciate the conversations I've had with you about the work that's been being put into ensuring that, again, schools remain places for learning and that the staff and the students are supported in these efforts. So the last point that I want to touch on during Committee of the Whole is about the School Funding Reform Act hearings that were held by the Department of Education over the last fall or so. So the Department of Education held four School Funding Reform Act hearings, and Dr. Seltzer, Ms. Sherman, and I attended the last one on January 16th. And to give a little bit of context, the School Funding Reform Act, it requires, it basically says, says how the state will fund local education agencies, so districts like ours. And the law requires that there's an educational adequacy report given every three years that is used to update the school funding formula, which is extremely important to make sure that the school funding formula stays up to date and meets the needs of students. And it's actually required by the courts to allow the act to be deemed constitutional, these educational adequacy reports. And so the next report is actually expected early this year. And so I believe that's one of the reasons why the Department of Education was hosting the School Reform Act, Funding Reform Act hearings. And there are public hearings to basically solicit feedback from the public about updates that they should look into or apply to the school funding formula. And so we went there, and I'd actually like to ask Dr. Seltzer to talk about that experience because I think it was very illuminating for us.
Good evening, everyone. So as Roger just said, Sarah Sherman, Roger and I went to this hearing. And we were there with a lot of our neighbors. We were there with BOE members, superintendents, BAs, union leaders from Haddon Township, Haddon Heights, Cherry Hill, among many, many others. And we were all there really to, I think, discuss what we saw as the crux of the problem, which is that, you know, because we're bound to only a 2% increase in property taxes, we only have a few options for closing funding gaps. We have grants, we have tuition from sending districts, and we have state funds. But unfortunately, the formula the state uses to calculate those funds, and we heard district after district saying the same thing about this, just doesn't account for many of the elements of serving students in 2024. You know, we've heard this many times here and in our committee meetings from our own BA, from Dr. McDowell. But to hear it echoed, I think, from our neighbors and others across the region was really powerful. We also want to thank, we know that there are some community members who either came and spoke or submitted statements. So we really, really appreciate those folks and really encourage that advocacy. We hope it continues because we really need the help. And overall, I think I can speak for Sarah and Roger when I say that we're glad we went on behalf of the board. And we look forward to more opportunities to tell Collingswood stories to state officials who seem to be interested in listening, so.
And Ms. Sherman, do you have anything to add?
I was really glad I went. I mostly talked about just being in two perspectives, not just in the classroom, but also being here and what this looks like across multiple districts of multiple sizes. Something I thought was very telling, and I was just talking to Ms. McCowsky about this, like the Cherry Hill superintendent made a really wonderful and compassionate speech, I thought. And that's a massive district that serves over 10,000 students and that only a few years ago passed a $363 million referendum. And they still are concerned about being able to meet the financial burden that they are looking at. And so I don't think this is a small district issue or a large district issue. This is a New Jersey state issue. And so it was really compelling to hear so many districts of different sizes all kind of singing the same tune.
Thank you. And, you know, I want to echo that it was helpful to see and encouraging to hear so many different voices advocating to state for this change. I think it can't come soon enough. These are really immediate impacts that all these districts are going to feel soon in February and in March, when the state funding allocations come out. So, you know, one of the things that, again, I want to thank the community members who have advocated to the state and those who will advocate to the state because this is a matter of funding our schools for all of our kids. So to close out Committee of the Whole, I'd like to take a moment to read out my statement that I gave to the Department of Education that night. Ms. Sherman also gave a statement. Hers and mine can both be found linked on the district website. But I'd like to read it into record here to close out Committee of the Whole. Good evening. My name is Roger Chu, and I am president of the Collingswood Board of Education. Collingswood is a district that typically sees about the same funding from the state every year. We aren't one of the districts that typically makes the news because we don't gain or lose millions of dollars in funding. Yet Collingswood and many districts like ours still face an untenable financial situation. Since the pandemic, the cost of education has continued to rise, far outpacing a 2% property tax increase we are limited to each year. Our healthcare costs are projected to rise 10% or more for the next school year. Transportation and special education costs continue to grow at unmanageable rates. Teacher, staff, and administrative salaries continue to rise, as they should. But recent contract settlements in Camden County have resulted in yearly salary increases well above the 2% cap on property tax increases. According to our estimates, all this means that next year we will see an additional $1.8 million increase in the cost of salaries, benefits, and health insurance. At the same time, we will be able to raise only an additional $375,000 in revenue from taxes. That's a $1.4 million hole before we even add in the increased cost of supplies, transportation, and more. In the face of this reality, we have already whittled down school supply budgets. We've limited facilities maintenance budgets and put off purchasing maintenance equipment, even as we maintain seven school buildings, three of which are over 100 years old. We've sustained one of the lowest administrative costs per people in the entire state. We've brought in grant funding to maintain services for our children. We've asked our community to contribute the maximum 2% or more of additional property taxes for the last decade. Even still, about eight months ago, we had to let go of 21 of our valued teachers, staff, and administrators to maintain a balanced budget. So how do we continue to provide the programming, extracurriculars, and services our children need to flourish and grow without the funds to do so? How do we retain our dedicated teachers and staff when we cannot raise enough revenue to provide the yearly raises that they deserve? How do we plan for the future when we have to wait until February or March of every year to know what level of funding the state will provide us? I do not exaggerate when I say that these questions keep me up at night, and I know they weigh heavily on the minds of many others in this room and across the state. Collingswood is a community that wants the very best for its children, passionately supports its teachers, and values inclusion equity. If we are to come anywhere close to meeting these expectations, the Department of Education must increase the per pupil base funding amounts, cap year-over-year increases in vendor costs, and provide guidance around what we can ask for, from our community by way of bond question. This kind of meaningful action from the state would enable our district to truly serve all of our children and be part of the state's legacy of excellence in education. Thank you for your time. So with that, I would like to ask for a motion to close out Committee of the Whole. And is there a second? All in favor? So moving on to Section 5, Future Dates and Miscellaneous Information. These are the upcoming future dates, several PTA meetings, a few days in which the schools are closer to staff PDI. I want to specifically, though, point out the Thursday, February 6th, Board of Education Roundtable from 6:30 PM to 7:45 PM at the Collingswood Library Committee Room. I think we'll have a chance potentially as a board to discuss maybe a topic for that roundtable during our retreat this upcoming weekend, and which we'll then announce to the committee. But that roundtable is open to the public, so please do come by if you would like to chat. Now on to Section 5. Now onto Section Six, Routine Business. So motion to approve the minutes of December 16th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting and the January 8th, 2025 Reorganization Board Meeting.
So moved.
And a second? Is this an, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We now move to Section Seven, which is our first opportunity for public comment. So the purpose of this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through the appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made by the Board President after a public comment or at the end of public comments. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by the Board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expect to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment and Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mr. Goldberg, music teacher at the Garfield and Tatum Elementary Schools here in Collingswood. I am here today speaking on behalf of the district music teachers, Ms. Carlson, Mr. Gross, Mr. Hartung, Ms. Intricasso, Ms. Ludwig and myself. It is the mission of the Collingswood Public School District's Music Department to provide every Collingswood student the opportunity to grow through a high-quality, ability-appropriate, universally accessible music education that inspires the continuing study of music. Tonight, my music colleagues and I are heartbroken. We are heartbroken every time we hear a family is pulling out of Collingswood Public School System in favor of a charter, private or parochial option. We are heartbroken when funding is siphoned away from the public schools due to dropping district enrollment. We are heartbroken when students are forced to say goodbye to their home and their friends because their family does not believe the district is meeting their needs. We are heartbroken when families run out of reasons to stay. Well, I come to you all today with the answer you've been looking for. Let the music program be your reason to stay. Here in Collingswood, the music team works tirelessly to provide programming that students can be proud of. Programming that says, "You belong here in Collingswood." Programming that on field trips, in competitions and in performances, students can unabashedly announce that they are proudly from the Collingswood Public Schools. With a culture of pride and belonging, it's no wonder that there are far fewer behavioral incidents in the music wing of the student body. With pride and belonging, it's no wonder state test scores on average benefit from participating in a high-quality music program. With pride and belonging, it's no one wonder there are active parents and community members who gladly volunteer their time and energy to support their children's music education, many of them sitting among us here today. To those families who tuned in tonight, looking for that one reason to keep your children in the Collingswood Public Schools, here are five. Music teacher and high school music director, the inexhaustible Mr. Brian Gross. The middle and high school band director, the relentless Ms. Lori Ludwig. Middle and high school orchestra director, the inspiration Ms. Liz Carlson. Middle and high school choral and musical director, the unstoppable Mr. CJ Hartung. And your very own high school choral director, the unyielding Ms. Kristen Intricasso. Thank you all for your time.
Okay. Can you hear, yeah? This is new and exciting. Okay. My name is Julie Snyder, 819 McGill Avenue in Collingswood, New Jersey. First, I have two things to say thank you for. Thank you for your response regarding ICE protocol. It is a relief to get a response from leadership to make sure that everyone in the district is on the same page. Thank you for testifying at the state level regarding fair funding. I also want to encourage you to work with our local government as well, as much as possible. I do have some suggestions and one is regarding the presentations tonight. It was really clear that admin is so proud of the programs that they are part of. I think as an audience member, it would be great to have maybe just one of those presentations per meeting and then we could go into maybe a little more detail and spread them out is a suggestion. I also, we love to learn, like, we love to learn about it. Also, I think it would be cool, we've been getting more text reminders lately, which is a great use. I think there could be a text reminder for Board of Ed meetings as well, just to remind the community that they're happening. And then my final recommendation has to do with the website because I heard a lot about the math program and the science program and things like that, that is not available on the website. And I, unless I'm missing it, and I will absolutely, you know, send me the info, I think it's really important as a parent. There is a lot of changes every year regarding math. I care a lot about what my kids are taking. There was confusion at the beginning of the year whether there was honor science or not honor science. My kid didn't know, I didn't know. Obviously, I can and will reach out to guidance, but that shouldn't be necessary for the most important part, as we heard today, which is the curriculum and what's going on in the classrooms. I think we need a lot more on the websites regarding that, that's up to date and accurate. And then finally, at the middle school, I heard that there were 82 students involved in Freaky Friday. Two of those were my own daughters. Unfortunately, and past years, the middle school theater program has always participated in the Collingswood Parade. Unfortunately, that didn't happen this year as a result of not having a teacher contract, which is really disappointing for my sixth and eighth grader and myself. It's a way to connect the community and the great stuff that's happening. There was also, we are lauding the music program, which is absolutely part of the great stuff happening. No middle school choir concert, which was on my calendar that unfortunately I had to erase as a result. So the teachers need a fair contract. It connects to the, the presentations we had today and that is what I would like to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Ramsburg, East Colter Ave., Collingswood. I have two seniors, twins. My comment is about item 13 of the agenda. I'm asking you to please, please give these teachers and staff who have been waiting 213 days a contract. When I first moved to Coll's, my kids were starting sixth grade. It was supposed to be temporary, but we fell in love with this town and the teachers at the middle school, like Ms. Coretney, Mr. McLean, Ms. Whitman, the amazing Dr. McMullin. Dr. McMullin, we love you and there's nothing you can do about it. They taught of inclusion, love and respect, so we stayed for the school and these awesome teachers and principal. Then when the kids got to the high school, we met Fieldman. Fieldman has been such a powerhouse role model for my kids and amazing mentor with the Social Justice League. When I had surgery and had to miss my kids being inducted into the National Honor Society, Fieldman was the first person I thought of to ask to go in my place to be there for my kids. And he was there. His exact words to me were, "It would be my honor." We have lost so many wonderful teachers that were here for many years, like Ms. Lori Gratch, who taught my son Trey computer science, the field he is going into after college. These teachers and staff deserve a contract. I'd also like to mention, the pay you are giving the assistant superintendents will cover a few teachers' salaries. The classes are overcrowded. The classes are overcrowded, the teachers and counselors are overworked, the students are the ones hurting. Your policies put kids with IEPs in overcrowded classrooms and you overcrowd AP class periods. The students are not getting the quality they deserve because the teacher has to make 30-plus kids understand the curriculum. I'm watching you slowly destroy the arts and languages. I've watched you push teachers out. Please help the kids of this town, we love so much, and give the staff a contract. Thank you. Go Birds!
Hi, Rebecca Sieg, 1030 Grant Ave. I've got two kiddos at Sharp. I'm also talking about Section 13 Personnel, another month, another staff resignation, more mid-year hires, which I know happens in school districts all over the country. What I'm curious about is kind of twofold. The first is, how is this body looking at the attrition data and what trends are you seeing compared to previous years? Not just overall numbers of who's leaving, but by department and grade and years of service in the profession. I'm curious how this year is stacking up previously and how the board's looking at that. The second is related to that is, culture starts at the top. I know that contract negotiations are still ongoing, hopefully not for that much longer, but while that work is happening, outside of the contract, how are district leaders in the school board really thinking about staff morale and staff retention? Because I look out and while we heard at length about the great work happening in our schools, that's our teachers and our educators leading that, but when we talk to them, we know, don't take my time. We know that morale is low. We know that our teachers are feeling the weight of what's happening and they're in front of our kids every day. So what, while contract negotiations are ongoing, is happening to bring that morale up. And my last is a request, as you have your board retreat coming up. This meeting style for the last several years where we come up and talk and speak and some of our questions get addressed later in the meeting and some don't, doesn't work. I would encourage you to think about changes to your own policies that allow you to respond to us in real time, so community members and educators can get the answers they need. Thank you.
I'm, I live at 702 Collings Avenue. I would also like to thank the board for their quick response to new questions about our student safety on a national level and their regard for the well-being of all the children in the district. Schools are becoming even more of a battleground across the country, so it is more important than ever that the contract for teachers be settled. There are many forces arrayed against quality, accessible and inclusive education and we cannot afford a divided institution. There is too much at stake. To that end, I request that the board settle the contract with the CEA in a good faith manner. Our teachers provide an incalculable service to the community, much of which is unpaid. So many of the amazing extracurriculars, memorable events and community involvement initiatives that were discussed tonight and that have made this district stand out rely on unpaid labor from teachers to occur. They are students' primary support for their entire school day, with much of their materials coming out of their own pockets. Settle a fair contract, rebuild trust both in the school community and the wider community. Everyone needs to work together to weather what's coming and that's easier to do when the party with more power demonstrates respect for those with less.
I'm Emily Green Hamilton. I live at 432 White Horse Pike. Our teachers are the heart and soul of our school district. If you know a teacher, you know that teaching is not a Monday through Friday profession. They spend their weekdays away from their own families to take care of our children. Teachers spend their weekends, school breaks and summers preparing their lessons. They cut laminated materials after they put their own children to bed and before they go to school. Teachers imagine how to bring literature to life for their students while they're cooking dinner. They use their own money to buy supplies for the students who cannot afford their own. Teachers carry their students in their hearts while they're away from school. They worry if their students will recall what they learned in class to complete their homework. They worry if their students will have dinner on the table and a warm place to sleep. Teaching is a dedicated art that is performed from the deepest part of a teacher's soul. It has been 213 days since our teachers have been without a contract. Over the past few years, our district has lost more than 100 teachers. Teachers typically avoid leaving a district at all costs. The stakes are high when a teacher leaves. You lose your tenure, you may not have, you may have to start at the bottom of the pay scale in your new district. However, above all, teachers avoid leading a dis- leaving a school district because they do not want to leave the students they teach and love with their whole heart. While the reasons for our district's mass teacher exodus are unknown to the public, I can surmise that something is amiss within this district, which has caused teachers to flee at this alarming rate. Adding insult to injury, our lack of a teacher contract is a roadblock to retaining our current teachers as well as a hindrance in attracting new talent, essentially resulting in the district's further descent into the storm. Contract negotiation years are difficult and affect the entire school environment. This not only affects the teachers, but the students. Teacher support is student support. Our students deserve to have a well-staffed district with teachers that are supported by our administration and board. The community is waiting for you to change the course before the ship sinks and that can only change with a fair contract. Please show our community that our students and teachers matter and settle the contract now.
Hi, my name is Melissa Helwig and I live at 115 East Browning Road and I am here tonight to urge the board to settle the teacher's contract. Without it, the entire school community is affected as teacher morale continues to diminish, current teachers continue leaving for other positions and new teachers avoid our district. The community is already missing clubs students enjoy and missing seeing teachers at events outside of contract hours. Events that our dedicated teachers have consistently attended without compensation because they know that building a relationship with their students creates trust, which turns into comfort in the classroom and a stronger ability for them to learn. And I support the CEA in pulling back from these non-contracted hours to bring attention to the fact that there is still no contract. It sadly needs to be done to raise the awareness because the amount of work that a teacher does outside of contract hours goes far beyond what we are even seeing when we miss our teachers at all the extra events. Within contracted school hours, teachers are teaching, they are engaging with our children. Every teacher gets a very small amount of prep time to do the many other jobs that are required of them in order for them to be present and engaged with our kids on a daily basis. Lessons need to be planned. Differentiation of these lessons need to be created for the diverse learners within each class. Activities and copies need to be made, tests need to be graded, parents need to be communicated with, other teachers and specialists need to be consulted with. None of that can happen when a teacher teaches. Let's add on that there's new curriculum, which we've heard about, is happening right now, new testing in many of our schools. Curriculum that needs to be learned by each of these teachers and while they may get professional development time to learn them, it is never enough. The most prepared, most efficient teacher will never have time for all that is required of them within a contracted day. So at the very least, teachers should be fairly compensated for the time they're required to be in school because they are going home to work for hours beyond that time. I have watched as the incredible newbie teachers, those who are and who are not even my child's teacher, support us on the challenging days. They are checking in with her, helping her get into school and start her day off well, calling me to know she's okay and has settled in on those rough mornings, taking their time when I know they have a million things to do, to make sure that not only my child, but I am feeling comfortable. This is just one small example of how they go out of their way for every child and family. And while I know that budget is a true issue, showing respect is free. The board has publicly placed blame on the union through emails and community communications. What communications have been sent to the community showing how much you value these If we wish to stop the mass exodus of teachers from our district, the board must start demonstrating actions that create a district where teachers feel valued, where they want to stay, where our district is the employer of choice for the best teachers. Settling the teacher contract would be a start, but I also hope you will consider how the actions you take, the decisions you make, the words you write and what you say in these meetings have an impact on the teachers who hold this district together. Thank you.
That was, that was incredible. My name is Johanna Clark. I live at 1107 Stokes Avenue in Collingswood and I've never done this before, so I might fumble a little. I'm a parent of two children who attended Zane North CMS and CHS, with a daughter who graduated, graduated from CHS and is a second-year junior in college thanks to dual credit. And I have, also have a junior in CHS who's doing very well. I'm a happy customer in some regards. In 2011, we moved here, as many do from Philadelphia. Just prior, in 2010, our oldest started kindergarten at a public school in Philadelphia and due to budget cuts, they had lost the art teacher, the music teacher and other resources. I'm here specifically to talk about the music program and Mr. Gross specifically. Mr. Gross started the same time our oldest started in first grade here at Zane, so we arrived here at the same time. He has become a fixture in both of our daughters' educations. When we got to Zane North in 2011, we were relieved that the girls would attend music class, learn an instrument and play in the school band. Both have participated back of, back of stage or front of stage in the musical productions, which were immensely meaningful experiences for them and so many other students, and Mr. Gross was there for all of it. In addition to being a parent, I am a licensed clinical social worker and my therapist's brain wants to acknowledge that Mr. Gross is teaching a very fancy- and my therapist brain wants to acknowledge that Mr. Gross is teaching a very fancy word that everyone likes to say these days, mindfulness. The kids in his class are indeed dropping into the present moment and are connecting and experiencing themselves in a way that can be profoundly therapeutic. Music has proven to assist in managing stress and boost self-esteem. It increases neuroplasticity in the brain and it is a free, reliable and non-narcotic mood changer. I feel fortunate to report that since 2011, both of our girls excelled here. For the most part, they did not complain. However, over the course of the last few years, we were hearing increasing reports from our kids and of their high-achieving friends and students, how many teachers were leaving and how those who remained were completely disheartened. I have become increasingly concerned that the limitations and blind spots of our administration are adversely affecting our educators and of course, our kids. When settling the contracts, soon I hope, it is taken, I hope it is taken into serious consideration to respect and value the teachers, Mr. Gross and the other music educators here at Collingswood. Thank you.
I'm Trey Ramsburg. I live at 32 East Colt Drav. I'm a CHS senior. I think I've demonstrated in this room my personal commitment to this district, not just as a student, but also as a member of the community. I even voted in the last school board election for the three candidates I thought would be least like the old guard of the board I had seen for the entire time in high school. I say all this because the legacy of the previous board was one of utter failure. Even those critical of the board always say we need to congratulate the board on its accomplishments. But I remain unconvinced because I can count those on zero hands. The previous board spent its biggest efforts on a proposal for an underbaked segregation-forcing vanity project that two-thirds of the voting public voted against. I told you so. The remainder of their efforts was spent on layoffs and personally enriching the unpopular superintendent. The board failed to sign a contract with our teachers union. Dr. McDowell, I don't want anyone to let you check off boxes anymore. I was on your DEI committee, I was on your school board, and I know people who are in your very school outreach programs. I'm going to report now to the public that they are all excuses for you to pat yourselves on the backs and say you've done something. You, like most people with power, only listen to us when we make demands of you in public. You treat yourselves like real politicians in Washington and you're starting to act like them too. You get credit for administrators' efforts for a short of justice, but it's only because we begged you for it instead of hiring a school cop at our taxpayers' expense, which you did anyway. President Chu, you've been the stats guy for a pretty long time now. You recently talked about how you all needed to make those 20 layoffs last year. That's after 50 teachers and staff left, so I guess you really need to make 70 cuts. That same year, you rehired Dr. McDowell and gave him a pay raise. I know that because I was sitting there next to him. That year, you did not sign a contract with the CEA. The message you sent is that Dr. McDowell did a better job than 70, actually all of your teachers. Does anyone here believe that? Here's some real stats. Out of the 36 discreet districts in Camden County, McDowell is on the top 10 highest-paid student attendance. And Coll's is the bottom 10 for minimum teacher salary. What work are you all doing that you need the help of any assistant supers? Most schools in the area don't have them, don't have as many or don't pay them as much. When I say you have the money, I'll look you in the eye and say you have it in your bank account. You somehow retain enough history teachers to let me know that unions are usually in the right side of history and those opposing them are the wrong. These are not policies that inspire confidence. The old board and its priorities were unelectable. If this superintendent were, if the superintendent were elected, I would get more votes than McDowell. Progressive isn't just something you call yourself to get elected in Collingswood. I'd like the voters to realize that too. It's something you have to do. It would not be an accomplishment to sign a contract. It is the bare minimum for functioning as a school district. Do the bare minimum.
Hi, I'm Katie Deschaine of 11 Maple Lane. First, thank you to everyone that spoke before me much more eloquently than I'm about to speak. You all are amazing. I'm a mom of three kids in the district. I have two in our pre-K program and one at Garfield's. Both my husband and I volunteer in the community. I am a field hockey coach for our K through two. My husband is the youth wrestling coach. And we know many of the parents across many of the schools in this district from those roles. We are both completely, both very dedicated to the success of the young people in this town. First and foremost, I agree with one of the other speaker. If you're going to impose a three-minute limit on us to speak, you need to do a better job of being more efficient in managing your meetings. I would also like to thank the teachers who have done so much for my children. Mr. Goldberg, Ms. Negri, Ms. Ward, Ms. Kresge. You all are shaping my children's future and I cannot be here without you and be successful in my role without you. I see the amazing work of our teachers even at such a young age with the social, emotional learning curriculums that are in place. I do really appreciate that. One thing I would like this board to act on is there's no information on how parents can assist in contract negotiations. It's unacceptable that we don't have a contract and there's nothing we can do to help. Our hands are tied. This information needs to be publicly posted for us to act on. As a mom, I love our elementary school, but I have major concerns about how we will be able to grow and scale in this community with our current school board and with our current superintendent. We have no follow-up on next steps for certain things. For example, the referendum, which failed miserably in this town. There has been no action taken. We do not know what the next steps are. We are all in agreement that we need capital funding in this town to improve our schools. And we are in a position where we can do another referendum, but we do not have next steps. I am at the point where I will say what everyone is thinking. We are losing confidence in you as the superintendent and we are losing confidence in this board. We need you to step up. We need you to negotiate with our teachers. And we need a contract so that my children can continue to thrive in this district. Thank you.
My name is Dashrell Korea Fisher. I'm a senior at the high school. My address is 1017 Eldridge Ave. I was initially not going to speak today. I think everything I wanted to say has been said. And the only really big concern I have is what are you going to do about everyone's qualms, everyone's grievances? Is there any, has there been any consideration into what the next step is? Are you allowed to speak during this? Okay. Okay, I kind of wanted to hear now, but that's fine. We've been, you know, waiting for an answer for about two years. So I guess the only thing I have to say to all of you is step up or step down and contribute to yourselves, to our success and to our benefit. I'll give a quick testimony. Over the last two years, the school system has failed. Most people I know, I'm to the point that I was considering dropping out of high school, not even transferring, dropping out. I had lost all hope in how a school system, how a community could benefit me. I realize now that a lot of people care and that's what really is the foundation of a community's success. And I don't know. It would be nice if I could hear some enthusiasm from all of you and some concern for what everyone is going through, every teacher, every student, every parent. But it seems lost upon you to act accordingly, so that's all.
Hi, my name's Eva Ryan. I live on 170 Long Side. So I just actually am here as a parent. I also work as an instructional aide at Tatum. Okay, I just brought that up because I feel like it's really important because it gives me like a privileged view. Just give me a privilege view every day of the teachers and their days. And I know I look like a young person, but I've been working for a long time. And I've been at a lot of different jobs. And never in my life have I been with a group of people who show up to work every day despite lack of resources and often unsupported and challenging work, show up with such positive and uplifting faces every single day. And also, I've never had a set of coworkers that stands next to each other and stops what they're doing and talks to each other and works things out and tries to help them do whatever they can at every moment. It's just really, it makes me feel really happy that they're here and a part of the community. And so as a parent, I want to say that that's what's special to me. That's what matters. The teachers that show up every single day for my kids. Because they're, like, my kids' lives are like completely changed by their presence. And so I hate speaking in public, but I thought it was really important that I made it clear that I'm here as a parent. But the joy that I get out of working with them every single day has really been unbelievable for me. And I want to make sure that the community understood that they're there doing everything they can in every possible capacity despite losing people and losing resources and losing help and fighting for your children, there for your children. And it's, they're beautiful people. And so I just wanted to say that, I don't know where I was. That I think we, we all know the community is held up by the people in it. And stability is one of the best things we can give our children's education. Knowing our teachers are going to be there year after year to support and get to know my children is the most valuable part of their education. Over the years, I've seen the teachers have to adopt changing curriculum and fewer resources and support. I'm exhausted by the idea we can't support and secure our teachers, a foundation of our community, a foundation of our children's invaluable development into strong, kind, decent adults. I think it's a community and as parents, it's time to put our foot down and we need to give our children what they deserve.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl DeVito. I'm at 136 New Jersey Avenue. I am here tonight as a parent. I moved to Collingswood four years ago. We picked Collingswood and one of the reasons was because of the schools. And we made the right choice. Close of the mic, sorry. And we made the right choice moving to Collingswood and we were proven that we were right. I ended up also becoming an IA at the school, at Tatum. And we fell in love. I've been there, I'm sorry, let me start. It was part-time. I just started volunteering. And everything that Eva just spoke to is exactly why people stay in Collingswood. They want to be here. They want to be around teachers that actually care. We have, our principal knows every kid by name. And they'll be like, he'll be like, oh, you know, your son wasn't here yesterday. Why not? You know, is everything okay? And like checking in and getting down to eye level with these kids and not speaking to them, but with them and talking about them and caring about them. I've seen teachers trying to teach in hallways. I've seen our art and music teacher exchanging rooms so our kids can just keep moving in and out casually and just trying to make it as seamless as possible so the kids can just focus on learning and growing and becoming better people. So I feel like it's a slam dunk why they all deserve to have their contract taken care of. You can just keep having these meetings, you're just going to keep hearing the same things, why they're wonderful and why we love them and why we care about them. Sorry, I did have a list too. I just got a little distracted. Okay. The one thing that my kids have brought to my attention is that the school keeps losing internet. It's taking from their learning, it's taking from the learning. It's taking from my kids losing internet in the middle of their own work. They're losing music during PE. And it's also interrupting their movement in mindful breaks. I don't know how many times they have to lose it to have it taken care of, but I feel like it happened a while ago with significantly fewer half-days. How are trainings still being made available to teachers? And I just, I don't know how they can do it in a bunch of half-hour increments. I feel like there needs to be more days dedicated to that. And everyone in this room is behind these teachers in town. I feel like they're kind of wondering when you guys are going to start showing up for them as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Brooks. I live at 524 Maple Avenue in Collingswood. I have two seniors this year. Today, my daughter, a senior with Down Syndrome, sorry, received an invitation to attend the SHARU Day for TC&J's four-year program for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Last week, she was invited to interview for a similar program at the University of Delaware. And she's still awaiting a response from Villanova, like my son's waiting for his responses. These opportunities have been made possible due to consistent, dedicated teachers she's had over the few years, the past few years. They've tailored their teachers to her needs, teaching to her needs and encouraged her to take on challenges. However, this year has been different. The inconsistency in her schedule due to new or absent teachers, reliance on substitutes have disrupted her education. I'm thankful this didn't happen during her junior year, the year that's most critical for college applications. As this instability would have been more detrimental if it had occurred earlier in her high school career. The loss of experienced teachers who understand her individual learning style has caused delays with an, and with an IEP, it takes even longer for new staff to get up to speed. The cuts to electives and staff departures particularly affect students with disabilities have only compounded these challenges. It's clear that when teachers feel unsupported, and they do, they leave, which only further disrupts the stability students need for their education. I'm urging you to please reach an agreement, settle now so that our students can all have a consistent year. Thank you.
Hi there, Nina Anastasia, 170 Fern Ave. How you doing? I'm not going to be very eloquent tonight, I don't think, because I didn't have time to write stuff down. I'm also a teacher in a neighboring district today. My son went to Tatum and he's now at CMS. And I've been through contract negotiations before in my district as a teacher and it's awful. It's really awful. And it was evident how proud the administrators are of the teachers through the presentations that we saw earlier. And I think what happens is everyone expects teachers just to do those things. And teachers do do those things. But when you have to go through a very long and drawn-out contract negotiation, I think as a teacher, you realize you don't, oh, I don't have to do all those things. And once that tipping point tips, it's hard to get that back. So just here to urge, I know things are difficult, there's two sides of course, but please, I'm just here to urge you and lend my voice to the cause of settling the contract as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Hi, Marion Davis, 502 Haddon Avenue. I have three daughters, two in the middle school and one at Garfield Elementary. I'm also the vice president of the Garfield Elementary PTA Boards and I'm an IA at Sharp. I've always known that our teachers do amazing things. But now that I work in a school and I see it on a daily basis, it is shocking to me what these teachers do and what's expected of them to do in the timeframes that they have to do it. Our teachers give their all every single day to the children of Collingswood, Oakland and Woodland. They deserve and need a contract with fair pay, but they also deserve to be treated as the experts they are. They deserve to have access to materials they need to teach our children. They deserve to be supported, supported, not torn down or have their input not valued. If our teachers are facing a hostile environment, imagine the effect this is having on our students. Teachers don't just leave by the dozens without good reason. And no, it's not because of just low pay. There is something deeply, deeply wrong within their workplace and the buck stops at the top. The buck stops at the top. It is the board's job to ensure that our teachers and students are provided with a supportive place to teach and learn. It seems like we, the public, have been saying this over and over and over and over again for a very long time and nothing has changed. Please listen to this. I urge the board to speed up negotiations and reach a fair settlement. We all know they deserve it. Give them a contract now. Give them a contract now.
Hi, my name is Andrea Hines, and I live at 248 East Night Ave. My son's a freshman at CHS, and my daughter's a seventh grader at CMS. I also have the privilege of serving as the secretary of the CMS PTA Board for the last three years. Our teachers and support staff are the heart and soul of our district. They deserve a fair contract, and it's upsetting to hear we're losing even more quality teachers. Our teachers lack the resources they need to do their job effectively and are constantly tasked with doing more with less. The new curriculum programs discussed at recent board meetings are exciting, but how will our kids benefit when we have constant internet issues and inferior technology? Teachers are asked to create two daily lesson plans, one lesson plan for working internet and a separate lesson plan in case the internet goes down again. The second marking period ends in a few days, and students are still unable to access working Chromebooks. We have a CMS class with only 11 Chromebooks for 20 students. How is that acceptable? I'm sorry. These issues aren't new. You know, many teachers and parents have verbalized similar concerns over the past few months. Why aren't we moving forward? Our teachers are hurting, and our entire school community deserves better. Teacher support is student support, and we all benefit from a fair contract. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Amy Marzalino, and I live at 1103 Stokes Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to share some very positive things that I've experienced about our teachers, and I also want to say that I appreciate your service on the board. I have two children who have benefited greatly from their dedication and hard work. I have also seen their commitment to our students in my capacity as a former instructional aide at Tatum Elementary and as the current customer for our CMS and CHS theater programs. During COVID, my daughter's teachers gave her additional math and reading support. One teacher zooming after hours while making dinner for her own children. My daughter could not read fluently in fourth grade and is now enrolled in honors English as a freshman at CHS. When she had anxiety about returning to school after COVID, they met her on the sidewalk and talked her into the building. When she wanted to join Collingswood Youth Theater, the teachers gave her encouragement, support, and breaks when she needed them. That shy, introverted kiddo is now performing in musicals, choir, and her passion for those arts, supported by our teachers, are quite literally what bring her into this building every day. My son had surgery to restore hearing loss and could not return to school for some time. His teacher delivered a care package to our door with drawings of his beloved Roblox avatar that she had made herself. Later that year, when he lost his hearing aid, the staff, including the principal, took to scouring the grounds at Zine in an effort to locate it. I think he flushed it down the toilet, but I'll never know. I'm sure many of you have seen Mr. Gross on his bicycle, zooming between schools on his way to this orchestra, that rehearsal. You may not know that he is also a fierce advocate for providing every student in our district with an instrument and the adaptive equipment some students may need to learn how to play them. My dedication to costuming our school's shows was reinforced on a late Sunday evening when a very sick and febrile Mr. Hartung was sweating over the board making lighting adjustments for newsies. When I suggested he go home, he said, "I'm just going to do a little bit more." Our teachers often spend more time with our children than we do. They are instructors and caregivers and such a vital part of our community.
Ms. Marzalino, that was three minutes. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I get, like?
Really quick.
They are being asked to do more with less. Less opportunities for our teachers means less opportunities for our students. I left my chosen profession as a social worker because I got burned out. I could not serve my patients and families in the way I wanted because I felt unappreciated and helpless. It pains me to know that many of our dedicated staff are feeling that burden now, especially the ones who do a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Marzalino.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michelle Benes Kimball, and I live at 415 Virginia Avenue. I have a son at Mark Newby, who's a fourth grader. I'm here to talk about teacher negotiations, and negotiations have been going on so long that even my yard sign gave up hope supporting the teachers. So, please, let's start off 2025 right and do something within our control and get the teachers under contract now. As these negotiations continue, please, let's keep it behind closed doors and demonstrate the respect for the professionals who teach our children every day. I hope that we can come together in good faith to close the gap and get our district moving together in a positive direction. Speaking for my family, I can say that my son has thrived at Mark Newby, and that is all driven by the support he has received from his teachers and support staff. If we want to continue to attract high-quality educators, we need to support their work with a fully realized contract. We're so lucky to have dedicated teachers that are committed to our students, even though their contract has not been settled. But let's get back to where teachers can put their full focus on our students versus worrying about their benefits and future at the district. As this lingers, I'm scared that this conversation is going to move towards us having to close the school because we won't have enough teachers to maintain operations. Thank you.
Hi, Cara Boiler, 90's Summerfield Avenue. I have four students in the Collingswood School District, all girls, two at the high school, and a senior and a sophomore, and two at Mark Newby Elementary, a fourth grader and a kindergartner. I want to, I guess, echo everything that everybody said tonight, especially the, the care and the passion that our teachers put into making sure that our students have educational opportunities that are kind of out of the box. I have a math teacher at the high school who specially delivers English reading material for my daughter that she thinks would, she would be passionate about just to get her to keep reading. That daughter who never really liked reading, she would scream and hit me in the face as a toddler because she didn't want me to read to her anymore, has surpassed the reading level expectations of an AP, AP English student for her grade level. And on going down, down the line with my younger students, I had a teacher who, at Mark Newby, took my now sophomore and instilled in her the value of being a self-advocate. And it's been a long road for her. She has an IEP, she's worked very hard, but without some of the teachers that have pushed her, we would not be where we are, except one of those teachers resigned this year. My next daughter in fourth grade, she had, she has a very special connection with a teacher. This teacher actually came to our house early one morning because she won an award to ride in a police car, but she was too nervous to do it. So, this teacher arrived in the police car and brought her to school, even though later that morning she ended up vomiting and going home. So, and then my, my youngest, who's in kindergarten, or in, yeah, she's in kindergarten, she spent two years at, in pre-K at Sharp. She had a wonderful experience with a teacher who also has four girl, four kids, and that teacher kind of broke the mold for her, made sure that she could be an achieving student when she was kind of, she was, she's my loose cannon. She's not the one that's going to have somebody over her unless her siblings are staying on top of her, because I, I may have given up at this point. But I just wanted to, I guess I wanted to say that our, these educators, these teachers that show up at our building, they give families the reason to stay. We, we want to stay here because we love the teachers that are doing these things for our students. So, our educators deserve fair compensation and the respect of a fair contract. It's not just about the teachers, it's about our children and the community's future. We must stand with teachers, ensuring they have the resources and support they need to do their vital work. Let's prioritize their needs so they can inspire, educate, and teach confidently. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Howard. I live at 16 Fraser Avenue. I'll, I'll be pretty brief. I'm kind of recovering from, from the plague or something. It's, it's not bubonic. But I just wanted to, first, I, I do want to thank the board for communicating that schools will be a safe place, given the very, very unfortunate situation our country is in due to the recent new administration, because that was the right thing for the district to do and the board to do. I also want to thank the board members who advocated for funding changes, because again, that's the right thing to do, but it's also the right thing for the board to settle a fair contract ASAP, because it has been way too long. And as many, 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 many people have said tonight, our teachers deserve it, and it needs to happen now. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jody Farrer. I live at 911 Park Avenue, and I have four sons, three of whom are currently in the district, and a freshman who is at Paul VI, because much like a majority of last year's eighth-grade class, we had talked to our teachers, and the teachers that I have the most unbelievable stories that move me to tears about, I would say 80% are gone. The writing was on the wall for all of last year's class that we did not know who would even be here to teach our kids. I'm here right now because multiple teachers directly texted me and said, "Hey, can you come and actually say what it was that we did for your kids?" Because they do not believe that you guys think that they're making much of an impact to our kids. And I cannot tell you enough what they have done for my kids. Unbelievable what they care and what they do. But if we don't have a fair contract and if we don't do something about the morale in the building, and if we do not do something about the morale of our students who are lacking so many of the normal, and I'm specifically talking about high schoolers, because I have a high schooler, I have a middle schooler, and I have an elementary schooler. In high school, they are losing so much of the high school experience because the teachers don't have a contract right now and cannot be doing a majority of the things that they previously did. I just hope that more people will feel hope enough in this current eighth-grade class this day, and I have a seventh grader right now who I'm advocating desperately to keep in district, because I cannot tell you the anguish of pulling my freshmen, but I did not think that there would be really anybody to teach him here. And based upon conversations directly with teachers, I had good insight into what they were all thinking. So, again, I am begging that something be done so that my seventh grader has hope to be here, because this is where we want to be and where we have been so actively involved for years. So, thank you so much. I really do appreciate your time.
Hi, I'm Kelly McGinnis. I live at 412 Cattell Avenue. I have two students at Sharp. I also want to say thank you for your statement about immigration. I thought the letter was beautiful. One thing that I'm just wondering about is why we don't see those kinds of communications offered, at least in Spanish, especially given the topic. There's other communications from the district that have been great, but I'm wondering about families who need something besides English. And the other thing is, I'd really like these teachers to get paid, so please settle. Thank you.
Rod Pierce, Collingswood Middle School. I just want to say thanks to the community. It was wonderful to hear the, the amazing words that you all said about some of the personal teachers and just teachers in general and the support staff, and everybody goes into doing the best we can out here and all that kind of stuff. You parents who think you weren't that eloquent, you are amazing, and I thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. So, my name's Mike Pelucci, and not only do I work here, but I'm the vice president of the CEA and a parent in the district. Much like the Hair Club for Men, I'm not only the vice president, I'm also a member. But I do want to say that, I want to first of all applaud the efforts by some of you in front of me here and also people in the community to lobby the state on behalf of the outdated and insufficient funding formula for taxes and how our buildings are funded and our operations here. I also, though, want to point out that that doesn't even nearly begin to tell the story about the dysfunction in this district. And I think there's a narrative out there that the shortfall of funds tells the story, and there's people that are trying to craft that narrative in town. And if you agree with me, and you work here, and you agree that that does not even begin to tell the story, let me get ahead of you. All right, so you can see that this is not just coming from me. All right? I also want to applaud the letter that went out, as others have, about ICE. I will tell you that ICE will have to go through me if they come into my classroom for an undocumented student. But I also have to buffer the people in this room, okay? Think about what that means. Think about what that is saying about the people that work here. The truth of the matter is, if our contract was a priority, it would have been done already. It would have been done already. Okay? And that's the truth. You know, we saw presentations from our administrators earlier, and not a single thing that they lauded, that people smiled about, was done without the labor of the people that work here, in some cases, free labor. So, if you benefited or if your kid benefited from Mr. Ingram's program, get Mr. Ingram a contract. If your student benefited from Ms. Armino's TV program, get her a contract. If your student benefited from any of the people in this room, get them a contract and get it done now. I will reiterate, and I will say it one more time, if this was a priority, it would have been done. Thank you.
My name's Valerie Yosway. I live at 332 Cattell Avenue. I have four children in the district. Two are in sixth grade, and two are seniors in the high school. I have a few things today to say. As far as the high school goes, I've been extremely disappointed in many things in the high school, and unfortunately, the, it should be a bittersweet moment that I have two children graduating, but I'm actually just so relieved that they're graduating. I shouldn't have to feel like that, and with that comes worry about my sixth graders, because before I know it, they're going to have to move on to the high school. I am looking into other options. I have talked to tons of parents in the district, some of whom are paying $12,000 for their kids to attend Catholic school, which is not possible for me to do. I've talked to other parents who are, you know, sending their kids to other local public schools. It's not something that I want to do. I want to stay in Collingswood. I want my kids to, they've all started, all four of them have been here since kindergarten. All four of them went to Tatum. I want them to go through the middle school and the high school. I want them to be proud of where they're graduating from, but I shouldn't have to feel relieved that, "Oh, my God, they're graduating high school. Thank God they're getting out of the high school." I shouldn't have to feel like that. And like Ms., you know, Mr. Pelucci said, if this was, if this was important enough, it would have been done. Like, the schools are all, like, they're, we're here for the teachers and the students, so if we're not supporting them, who are we supporting? I see Ms. Taglang here. My daughter had a panic attack when she went to Tatum. Ms. Taglang showed up at my door with flowers and a stuffed animal for her that my daughter still sleeps with. And the point of sharing that story is, Ms. Taglang is a gem, and everybody knows it, and there are so many teachers and so many people on the faculty that, you know, other parents have shared their stories. The teachers are the core, they, if we don't have our teachers and we don't have people like Ms. Taglang, like, what are we doing and who are we supporting if we're not supporting them?
I'm going before the tall guy, so the mic doesn't, I don't have to readjust the mic because that is not my thing. I am Robin Hogan. I am the very proud president of the CEA. Many things that I was going to say tonight, I don't have to say, because parents have already said it for me. But I do want to talk about the State of the Union right now, and that is, as we are continuing to show up and taking care of the children, but we do not feel like we are priority with this board, because we still do not have a contract, okay? We are the lowest, we are in the lowest third, and that's being generous in the county, okay? We are taking a stand because we do not want to be in the lowest third, and our teachers deserve more than that. We are taking-- We are taking a stand because we no longer-- We are taking, we are taking a stand because we no longer want our starting salary for new teachers to be ranked thirty in the county and thirty second for teachers who come to us with a master's. We are taking a stand for our administrative assistance and instructional assistance so that their salaries can be competitive and they can keep up with inflation. Okay? We are taking a stand so we can retain our staff. We need to be a priority with this board. We have seen so many other priorities come and go. When will the teachers and the contract be a priority? And settling this contract sooner is going to avoid, avoid fact finding. It's an expensive and time consuming process. Not only for, are we paying the board attorney a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour, but also the fact finding fees, which are around eighteen hundred dollars. And I ask, why would the board rather pay the attorney and the associated fees and go to fact finding instead of investing that money in a settlement and settling our contract? So settle this contract as soon as possible. We'll show the community that you value the talented staff and you value the work that we do. So I urge you to prioritize the staff that is face to face with our students every day making a difference in their lives. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Herman, High School. Um, just wanted to point out that it is nine thirty PM, which is past the bedtime of most of the, the teachers in this room. Um, so I just want to point out that we show up here because we care. We show up here because we care about the students, we care about this district, and we most of all care about each other. So I want to make sure that you guys care about us. Please settle our contract.
Eric Fieldman. I am a fifteen-year educator here at Collingswood High School and a proud member of the CEA. And just to get the elephant out of the room, let's settle the contract. Let's make it a priority. Please look at yourselves in the mirror and see what you're doing. Really, take, take a hard look at yourselves and, and see what you're doing and what you're doing to this community. Also is that, um, if you look at where we are in the world today, uh, diversity, equity, and, and inequality has been a real buzzword. Obviously, on a federal level, this has been dismantled at an alarming rate. Here in Collingswood, we've always prided ourselves in doing that work. Diversity, equity, inclusion. However, under this administration, two equity committees have been dissolved. Um, well, let me, let me change that. One has been resolved, it's just been laid to rest without any word. Since last June, when we were told, yes, we're starting up again in September, we have not heard a single word about when we're meeting again. The best PD we've ever had was through A to Z Equity, training us in this DEI, which is so important in today's world, yet we never heard what happened to them. Transparency? I don't think so. This is the second time I've come up here and addressed and asked people for an answer to that question and so far, that's the answer. So please, again, look at yourselves, see what you're doing to this community and take stock of yourselves and do the right thing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Tanyer. I'm from the high school. I want to thank all the parents who've come and spoken. Um, it is very nice to hear that somebody thinks we're doing a good job because unfortunately, it often feels from administration that we're not doing a good job. So it's very nice to know that parents and students think we are. I want to address two things in my three minutes. One, we've talked about a lot tonight and that is money. So I have a question and it is a district-wide question because last time, after I spoke at the last board meeting, I was told, I got an email saying that, about, that, that I should communicate via email, not ask questions. But this is a district-wide question, so I'm going to ask it. The referendum was voted down. Why are we still paying for money that we don't have, that we could give to teachers' salary? Why are we paying that money for Good Shepherd? Alright? That money's being paid every month as we try to buy it. Why are we still trying to buy it? And again, maybe you have a plan that you haven't shared with us. Please share it with us. Um, because the fact that you're, that, that, that we can't come to an agreement for the contract and we're still paying for a building, that I'm not really sure what the purpose is for right now, it's very confusing. And the second thing is respect. Um, and this is a little personal. Um, so I got an email from Guidance this morning saying, it's time to recommend. So I pulled out my, here's what AP Lit is. And I talked to my kids about it today. And then during your presentation, I, for the first time, was told that AP Lit is no longer a senior class, it's going to be a junior class, and that AP Language, we don't teach and don't have a teacher for, is going to be the senior. So I'm really confused now. Um, and I have to go tell students that what I told them today about the sequence is not what was part of the presentation tonight. You gotta tell us. You, you, you gotta tell us what's going on because now I have to go to a bunch of students and say, by the way, we are so unimportant that important decisions that are going to affect your senior year were made without anybody knowing. Thank you so much.
Alright, seeing as there are no more public comments, uh, I would like to address a few of the points that, uh, came up tonight and also I think Dr. McDowell has a, uh, comment about the, um, about also another piece. So I think that the overarching theme tonight, of course, has been about negotiations and, and I would like to personally thank everyone who's spoken and also echo what was said by many folks about how amazing it is to hear about all of the, the wonderful work that's being done by, by the teachers inside this, this district. The board also one hundred percent agrees and has been willing and eager to settle a contract. Just to, just to be, be clear, uh, we have met, uh, with CEA ten times since February twenty twenty-four, uh, most recently on December twelfth. Um, I'd also like to make clear that, uh, the board has offered, uh, raises in line with county average since March twenty twenty-four and has offered raises above county average since September of twenty twenty-four. We are eager to settle. Unfortunately, uh, we have not been able to come to an agreement. The next steps, uh, of the negotiations will be a meeting with, uh, the state-appointed third-party, uh, fact-finder. That will occur on April third. Um, one of the, uh, things that, that we're really hopeful that this third-party, uh, state-appointed fact-finder can assist us in coming to an agreement. Um, one of the, the pieces of their work is that after they are done, they will publish a, a non-binding public report, uh, that is released to the public with their recommendations and the rationales for their recommendation for a settlement between the CEA and the board. Um, we're very hopeful that, uh, that process will, uh, uh, help us come to an agreement. Um, and of course, we, we absolutely agree with you. Uh, we are eager and willing and have been eager and willing to settle, uh, a contract and, and again, have been offering, uh, raises with the consideration that we must be fiscally responsible, given our ability to raise funds and given the, the year after year after year, uh, need to, to meet the budget so that we can continue to offer all these amazing programs that have been talked about, uh, uh, today. Uh, I think I would like to then kick it to, uh, Dr. McDowell to, uh, discuss his point.
Sure, thank you. Um, just two quick things. And so first, I would like to thank, uh, all of our, um, leaders who presented this evening, um, talking about all of the good things that are taking place in our schools. And so speaking to, uh, the program of study, the program of study is a large, comprehensive, fifty-plus-page document that talks about the details around program, uh, offerings and structures. Uh, the presentation was in, for illustrative purposes and so, um, if there was a course out of sequence, uh, it will be, uh, corrected and adjusted, but I would refer, uh, to the program of study and the course selection guides that have been designed by our talented, uh, guidance team, um, as what we're actually following. Uh, and second, uh, I think that, uh, uh, Ms. McGinnis talked about, uh, the immigration, uh, letter that was sent out. And so, uh, the letter was sent out in English and Spanish. If your primary language of receiving information from the district is in Spanish, you received it in Spanish. If your primary language of receiving information was in English, then you received an English letter. Uh, and so I just wanted to make sure that we provided that clarity.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Alright, so, uh, we will now move on to section eight, the superintendent's, uh, report.
So section eight, uh, the enrollment, uh, report, section eight point zero one, uh, enrollment, December twenty twenty-three was two thousand two hundred seventy-six. Uh, enrollment as of December twenty twenty-four was two thousand two hundred twenty-two. That enrollment report is attached. Eight point zero two, point zero three, point zero four are the accompanying safety drill, suspension, and anti-bullying reports. Uh, and just to have a few, uh, quick updates, um, that was not, uh, shared, uh, this evening. Um, and so, uh, yes, we would like to thank again, uh, all of the, uh, community members as well as the board members and advocates who participated in the school funding, um, Reform Act hearings. Uh, and we encourage additional partnership within our community. Um, we'd like to make an announcement around preschool and kindergarten roundup. Collingswood preschool and kindergarten registration team is looking forward to the upcoming season. Collingswood families with children ages three or four by October first and not currently in our program can apply for full-day, high-quality, free preschool by completing the preschool lottery application beginning on February eighteenth. Children entering kindergarten and not currently enrolled in our preschool program can start the registration process at any time. The registration team encourages families to share this information with neighbors in our community and to look out for additional information that will be shared in the upcoming weeks. Contact information can be found on the registration page of our district's website if any questions, uh, arise. Um, we'd also just like to thank all of the students and staff for participating in school-community check-ins during the month of December and the month of January. The focus is to increase opportunities for student influence on school climate, culture, and overall school life and to also empower students with voice and choice in their educational journey. We met with groups of students in grades six through twelve, uh, in December, uh, so December twelfth through the, uh, uh, December tenth through the twelfth. In January, we met with diverse students in grades three through five at all elementary schools in Collingswood and Oakland, January sixth through January fourteenth, with questions, uh, being, uh, designed and aligned to what was developmentally appropriate based on the age of the students that we were talking to. Aligned with our faculty engagement efforts, we hosted informal staff feedback sessions in January at all schools, the thirteenth through the twenty-third, actively seeking feedback on how the school year is progressing and specifically what can we do to provide additional support to schools. We received, uh, a tremendous amount of valuable feedback from our staff and that will be reviewed, uh, in detail with the Board of Education this weekend during their board retreat and then a high-level summary will be released, uh, publicly to our community. Uh, and that concludes, uh, my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Section nine is the student reports. Uh, I see we do not have the, uh, student board members tonight, so we'll move on to section ten, the business administrator, board secretary's report. Ms. Coleman?
Um, item ten point zero one is the listing of your December monthly budget transfers. Ten point zero two is your, uh, board secretary treasurer's reports, uh, well, as well as all the, uh, financial backup. Ten point zero three is your student activities cash report. Ten point zero four, uh, Nutriserve financial statements for the months of November and December. Ten point zero five is a listing of the purchase orders that were issued during the month of January. Ten point zero six is, um, a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning. And I know we are, um, approving the audit tonight, but, um, just later, it'll, it should be on the website sometime tomorrow. I already sent it to the webmaster. If anybody wants to read three hundred pages of audit, go ahead. It'll be up there.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Uh, moving on to section eleven, Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Creator person will, uh, present.
The, uh, Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide, uh, seeking approval on the following items. Eleven two through eleven nine are the board secretary's report as it's been presented. Eleven ten is the twenty-three, twenty-four annual audit that Ms. Coleman mentioned will be up on the website that had no findings. Uh, eleven eleven is a local, uh, approval to go out for a local rec, grant submission to the state. Uh, this would be, uh, focused on the varsity baseball field and some dugout improvements that, uh, are fundraising to try to, to get done. Eleven twelve, updating our existing rental agreement for pre-K space that we use over at, uh, Oakland's Elementary School. Eleven thirteen, uh, minimum wage updates change for all non-seasonal minimum wage employees. Eleven fourteen is an RFP to go out for a new board engineer, or board engineer services. Uh, eleven fifteen is, uh, acknowledgement of a very generous donation to the Interact Club, um, by, by an anonymous member of the community. Uh, we thank them, uh, for the fifteen hundred dollars that will go towards supporting that club and their, their great work. Uh, eleven sixteen is a joint transportation agreement for a student. Uh, eleven seventeen through eleven twenty-four are the annual shared service agreements that we have with Oakland School District. Eleven twenty-five is our shared service, um, Buildings and Grounds Agreement with Mount Ephraim, along with eleven twenty-six, similar shared service agreement with Clementon School District. Uh, eleven twenty-seven and eleven twenty-eight are both use of facility requests for a wrestling academy, training, and the Odyssey of the Mind. Uh, so I'm seeking approval for items eleven two to eleven twenty-eight.
Do we have a motion? Second? Thank you. Questions and comments from board members?
I have a comment, um, and I did bring this up in, um, committee, but since, um, I would like to, uh, be transparent with the people that voted me in, I'm going to bring it up here as well. Um, I did bring up, um, and questioned Saint Teresa of Calcutta, the rent, um, and I am looking forward to hearing the future of that building, um, at the retreat. Um, again, it's a lot of money and I, um, do mirror the thoughts of if it's a priority, we'll pay for it, so, um, and then again, um, I thank you Beth Ann for answering all of my questions. Um, but there is, I do have a comment about legal fees. Uh, last year, we spent fifty-two thousand. This year, we're currently at ninety-two thousand. Um, again, priorities, um, so I just want to make sure that we're using our money wisely. So, thank you.
Uh, you know, I, so, uh, understanding that that actually came up in, in public comments, the, uh, the question about the Good Shepherd, correct? Um, one of the things that I do want to mention is, is that, uh, just because the referendum did not pass does not mean that our space issues, uh, have dissipated. Um, one of the, I think, the positives that I understand it of us having moved, uh, administrative and other offices into the Good Shepherd Building is the immediate opening up of other spaces. For example, a, a strings classroom in the secondary campus, um, and, and I think other classroom spaces, I think, at Zane North and so forth, that have, uh, uh, been helpful given how cramped of a space we are. And so having that administrative space there is still very helpful for opening up classroom space elsewhere, uh, in our, our tight district. Um, and I, I don't know if, uh, Dr. Mar, anyone else wants to chime in there? But that, that's kind of one thing I wanted to add.
I think that, y- yes, and so at the end of the day, um, we as a school district, we have been oversubscribed at the elementary level for over ten years. We have roughly three hundred students over our, uh, current, uh, state-level capacity, hence the reason for a referendum. Uh, the reason why we have not, uh, come out with, uh, referendum part two is because we, uh, took the feedback and it was important for us to, um, take a step back, look at the, uh, feedback that we received from the community and then reorganize our thoughts, um, and then start a new process. There is a formal statewide process. And so in years past, uh, the process is sixty days by statute. We knew that given the, uh, complexity of what we were proposing, it would take much longer, hence we went out six months in advance, uh, despite the, uh, statute saying sixty days. And so in terms of the Good Shepherd, we have students that are, uh, were receiving, uh, uh, instruction, targeted support, and intervention in hallways, in stairwells, in basements due to our lack of capacity. And so we pulled, uh, staff, uh, across multiple campuses out of those spaces and we gave those spaces back to the schools to begin to slowly start addressing some of the staffing movements that were necessary. That still does not address the oversubscription of students within each of our schools. Our schools were built at a time and they were not, uh, they have exceeded- Our schools were built at a time, and they were not, they have exceeded their capacity. And so the Good Shepherd is still very much part of the discussion. We just will be having a different approach to how we go about fulfilling that goal, and there will be future discussions that will start with the board, and then we will need to go back to our community, engage our community before we actually construct a new proposal.
Thank you.
I appreciate that that is a very long process. Do you have any idea of a timeline of when you're maybe planning, considering that we are paying on a monthly basis? You know, like, what kind of a timeline do you think might be reasonable to assume before we can have another plan for that building while we continue to pay it?
So, the new board was just installed January third. There will be a new ad hoc committee developed and discussed probably this weekend. Those discussions would be reserved for the ad hoc committee. Once it's been organized, once some discussions have taken place, and then once the state requirements in terms of being able to actually organize a plan, we have to go back through the process from the very beginning. So I wouldn't be able to speak on an actual timeline without the ad hoc committee working through the process, making formal recommendations to the full board after we've properly engaged the community about what a new proposal might look like.
And just to reiterate, it was clearly the desire of the previous board to bring in the Good Shepherd Building and make it into a school building for the district. Regardless of that, as Dr. McDowell has stated just now, there are current instructional benefits to kids for the fact that we have, are able to move administrative offices out of our current school buildings into Good Shepherd to open up classroom space within our buildings for our students right now. And so hopefully, more can come of that, but I do appreciate that there is currently instructional positives because of that. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkis?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. Moving on to Section twelve, Curriculum Committee, Ms. Sherman will present.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and school calendar, seeking approval for the following items. Twelve point zero two, there's actually no elementary school field trips planned. Twelve point zero three, there's a couple middle school field trips, including some of the MD six-to-eight program. Twelve point zero four, there's actually several high school field trips planned, mostly for our eighteen-to-twenty-one program. Twelve point zero five is an overnight field trip to Philadelphia next month for our model UN. Twelve point zero six to twelve point zero eight are some out-of-district placements, mostly for medical reasons. Twelve point zero nine through twelve point one-one, seeking approval for external providers listed there to work with students or clients in the school setting during the school hours. This is at no cost to the district. And twelve point twelve is approval for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Program of Studies. As Dr. McDowell stated, this is a fifty-eight-page document, and you saw some of the overview of it in the presentation. Pending board approval, scheduling will likely begin in February through April. And as we discussed in committee, this year's Program of Studies will be more creative. There are many students in study halls this year, so there's a greater effort to maximize instructional time with the addition of more elective options. I don't know if Ms. Hal Turner wanted to speak to that briefly?
Good evening, everyone.
Why don't we take a motion first, which will then open up discussion?
Do you do that?
Yeah, so can we have a motion to approve Items twelve point oh-two through twelve point twelve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Hal Turner?
Take two. Good evening again. I want to just touch on a few things regarding the Program of Study. First and foremost, thank you to the Collingswood High School Guidance Department, the building administrators, the supervisors. As you heard several times tonight, it is a long and comprehensive document that kicks off our student course selection process and sets twenty-five, twenty-six school year into motion. And so if you are watching at home or out here tonight, thank you to the many individuals who are involved in the careful and thoughtful work that it takes to put something together of that nature. I had some time to just check on Ms. Tanyer's question regarding AP English Four. It's actually included on page twenty-five of the Program of Study, so just wanted to clarify and respond to that question from earlier. Lastly, I've heard over the last few years regarding the Program of Study, feedback from staff and community members, this goes back to before I was even an employee here, just a member of the community and a mom, that there was a lot of feedback and a push to include the full scope of our course selections within the Program of Study so that students and families, when they're going through the exercise of choosing classes, can see the full list of options and opportunities. And that when options are removed from the course catalog, that then inherently means that students can't choose them in their course selection process, and it might seem falsely like there's a lack of interest in some classes. And so we made sure this year, and will proceed in this posture going forward, to include the full scope of our offerings in the course catalog so that students and families can see the wide range of options that they have to select from on a given, on a yearly basis. I would just add a caveat to that, which is that, of course, we balance that with the pragmatic actions of balancing budgetary constraints that we may face as we receive our state funding model in the coming weeks, as well as number of students who've chosen a class. Those that have particularly low enrollment, we may need to make some considerations for how we balance that out with other priorities across the school. But I just wanted to say, you know, feedback heard from prior years about the process by which we present the class offerings, and we have implemented that feedback and hope that that gives families and students, you know, a broader sense of the options ahead for next year and beyond. So thanks to those who spoke up about that.
Any other questions or comments? Something I was going to mention is that I appreciated, Ms. Hal Turner, that you mentioned that the schedule, the secondary schedule, there is no plan to change that this upcoming year, correct?
The current twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five master bell schedule will be the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six master bell schedule for the sixth through twelfth grade campuses. We feel like, well, of course, there's room for tweaks to further improve upon the current model. We feel like pleased with the current, like, the opportunities that it provides from a staff and student perspective, and are mostly excited that it will, by maintaining the current model, it will allow us to accelerate our student course selection and ensure that by the time staff and students leave in June, there will be a clear sense for staff and students of what their teaching schedule and load will look like, as well as their student schedules for next year. Maybe not the specific period-by-period breakdown, but a sense of their course selection, whereas that was pushed further into the summer this year. So by maintaining some of that consistency, we can expedite some of the exciting things that kids get to find out by the end of the school year.
Right, thank you. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkis?
Yes, except for required to abstain.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. Moving on to Section thirteen, Personnel Committee, Ms. Seltzer will present.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. At thirteen point oh-two, we have a retirement. Thirteen point oh-three, we have a resignation. Thirteen point oh-four to thirteen point oh-seven are leave requests. Thirteen point oh-nine to thirteen point eleven are new hires, oh, I'm sorry, oh-eight is a revised contract. Oh-nine to eleven are new hires for Sharp, the middle school and the high school. Thirteen point twelve is a new hire for the Wellness Center. Thirteen point thirteen is an extension of a long-term sub and replacement teacher contract. Thirteen point fourteen is the approval of a building substitute at Garfield. Thirteen point fifteen is the approval of a new elementary induction coordinator. Thirteen point sixteen is the approval of staff for the after-school tutoring program at Sharp that's offered through Title I or SIA funds. Thirteen point seventeen to eighteen are approvals for curriculum writing stipends. Thirteen point nineteen to twenty are approval of substitute athletic trainers and EDP stipends for athletic coaches. Thirteen twenty-one is an approval of various subs and tutors. And finally, thirteen point twenty-two is approval of travel expenses for two professional development opportunities. So I am seeking approval of Items thirteen, wait, thirteen point oh-two to thirteen point twenty-two.
Is there a motion? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkis?
Yes, except for required to abstain.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. Section fourteen, Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee, Ms. Maya will present.
The Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. So we have four policies up for review this month. Fifty-five twelve, the harassment intimidation and bullying policy. Fifty-five thirty-three, student smoking policy. Seventy-four forty-one, electronic surveillance in school buildings and on-school grounds policy. And ninety-three twenty, cooperation with law enforcement agencies. There haven't been really many changes to address in those policies, so we're going to ask for approval for fourteen oh-two, please.
Is there a motion? And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkis?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. Section fifteen, Miscellaneous. We have the fifteen point oh-one is the HIB report from the previous month, and so we are seeking approval of Item fifteen point oh-one. Can I have a motion, please? And a second? And questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkis?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. Section sixteen, the second opportunity for public comment. I'm not going to go through the whole public comment statement, but this section is for general comments. It doesn't have to be restricted to items on the agenda. As a reminder in all fairness to those who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person, and Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Beth Ann Rogers, I'm one of the CEA Vice Presidents, and I'm speaking in reference to what Mrs. Z brought up with her question about Good Shepherd. Just for clarification, because I'm in the secondary or I'm on the secondary campus, I can say that there have not been a huge benefit of opening up student rooms because of the shift over to Good Shepherd. That one strings classroom that used to house the tech department, that was actually extremely beneficial to have the actual tech department on the secondary campus, to be there to support and service all the students and the teachers. So that is definitely a huge loss with them being in the basement of Zane, which also, to my knowledge, does not free up any space for any students to be having any more space over there. And sadly, because of the slashes and the cuts to the music department in the beautiful band room, I feel like there's probably room for that one little classroom of students to be in the band room over there. And if the staff had been asked and considered, we probably could have brainstormed some places for that to help with that. But first and foremost, one of the major huge pain points that we're dealing with in the middle school is the overworking of the main office because of the child study team administrative assistants being housed at Good Shepherd. They're not there to meet the people, to greet the parents that come in. They are not just dealing with their everyday traffic running the office, which is a huge one-hundred-and-fifty-percent job to do on a daily basis on a good day, but now they're taking the extra work because the child study team administrative team is not on the secondary campus. So just wanted to clear that up, but thank you so much for asking.
Hi, Robin Hogan, CEA President. So I think I got the answer to my question about fact finding. So the answer is yes. You'd rather pay attorney fees, and you'd rather pay the fee for fact finding than just sitting down and knocking this out ourselves, especially given what was mentioned about how high our attorney fees are. That's the priority. Like, Good Shepherd is a priority. I think it's time to make the teachers and the staff members in Collingswood the priority and not other distractors.
Hello. My name is Christina Pipcarty. I am a, I live at H25 Loomwood Ave. This is my son Julian Carty. I'm a ninety-seven grad of Collingswood, married to another ninety-seven grad. Julian is in eighth grade, class president, and we were at a critical point in our career, his academic career, in terms of making the decision whether or not to stay here because we're not sure, given everything that's been going on in recent years, if this is the right place. Julian is a Collingswood wrestler. He has grown up with Coach Moody and that wonderful program and has dreamed about being Collingswood wrestler. He is an honor student. We recently met with a guidance counselor here who was wonderful from the high school to talk about what his academic career here might look like. One of the things that's really important to him is going into the business track. We understand that there's a retirement of the business teacher that the other business instructor that was here was let go last year. He reached out to Dr. McDowell, and thank you, Dr. McDowell, for being so responsive to Julian. He's met with him on a couple of occasions, and we just want to know if there are plans to carry that program forward. That's going to be a critical decision for him, whether or not he stays here or leaves. So hoping to get answers, and I want to let Julian speak as well.
Good evening. I'm as you introduced already, I'm the class president at Collingswood Middle School for eighth grade, and this year, I've really held myself to stand as an advocate for my classmates. I'm the kind of person to really try to, like, go up and beyond the standard and kind of help improve things within my school and community. So I was very pleased to hear all the different program offerings with the presentation earlier, and I am worried about the business program for next year. Retirement is inevitable, but I'd just like to have some more clarity going into next year and kind of like my scheduling options. Another recurring issue is definitely the states of the building and grounds. I brought this up with many leaders within the school system, and not much change has happened. I do think that they can be relatively simple solutions, and I think that just by cleaning up the bathrooms, hallways, stairwells, other such issues can really help boost student morale, and I think that all these problems start from the top down, whether it's just a little bit extra cleaning here and there, more enforcement in the cafeterias. And I think that just by improving the state of the buildings can really help student morale and really enhance the school spirit, which I think sometimes we lack. Another thing I've been trying to do is make more videos for the school. I think that Collingswood gets sometimes a negative reputation in the media, and I think that it would be great to try to shed more light to the public about some of the great things we have to offer at Collingswood. That's all from me. Thank you very much.
So, just really quickly, just wanted to comment. I have been very fortunate to watch Julian grow as a leader from his time at Zane North four years ago to the young man that he's become today. We have met, he used his voice. We met in a small group, and then he also participated in a focus group where the students gave us very tangible, very realistic, and practical feedback that we will be using in the future. And what I shared with Julian and his advocacy and his response about the business education program is that aligned with what our Assistant Superintendent talked about was was student voice drives the course offerings from year to year, and that all courses would be available for students to select, and that it is, it is incumbent that we promote the programs that we want to continue. And if there are students that want to take these programs, we will work to ensure that we have what what the kids are asking for. And so, look forward to continued discussions. And then Julian, I also look forward to you continuing to grow as a leader.
Dr. McDowell, one addition to what you shared. Julian, thank you so much for speaking tonight. Just on a, on a practical level, the high school principal is sitting about six, six seats down from you, and the director of the CTE programming, Dr. Principato, is in the black and white sweater in the front row waving at you now. And so if you want to chat with them before you leave, you might be able to get some clear answers here in the next five minutes. And then I'll just also use this as an opportunity to remind Julian and your family and all rising ninth graders that there is an eighth grade, ninth grade orientation session on Thursday evening at five thirty, Principal Newman, is that correct? At the high school, where all rising freshmen and their families will have an opportunity to meet with building administrators and other leaders and tour the facility and get a further sense of the opportunities and the exciting pathway ahead for freshmen at Collingswood High School next year. So Julian, I hope to see you there.
Wonderful, and so to close out public comments for today, I again want to thank everyone who spoke today. It was, again, just a very amazing experience hearing about all the the good work that is happening within the district. I want to thank the the middle school, high school, elementary and and pre-K administrators for their presentations about the amazing programs and the range of options that are being offered in our schools right now. And again, I want to reiterate the the board's willingness to to settle. Unfortunately, we cannot settle on our own, and we have, again, met ten times since February twenty twenty-four. We've also requested, two, three, four, four other meetings. Unfortunately, we have not been able to to meet. Fact finding, while it, there is a cost and while it will take time, we are hopeful that that will help us come to a mutually acceptable agreement, specifically because it will result in a public report that will, that will give the recommendations of the public fact finder about what the settlement should be. And so we are hopeful that that process will help us come to a mutually acceptable agreement that both meets teachers' needs and also ensures that we can continue providing the programming that that all of our students clearly want, as we've heard tonight. With that, I'd like to move to section seventeen, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And can I get a second? Thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.